Now, six o'clock, February 19th, it's time for a regular scheduled board meeting. Tonight, I've asked Commissioner Richardson to open us with the invitation and pledge.
Let me pray. Father, we thank you for this time that we have to gather together. We take care of the business of the county in order to make decisions to determine how best to spend the county's money. We pray that you give us wisdom, we pray that you give us guidance, that we might make good decisions. Lord, may all things be done to your honor and your glory. Will you pray for our first responders and our military as they're out today protecting our nation and protecting our rights and property? We pray, God, that you would just give them a safe night with our EMS and all of those, Lord, that do everything they can to keep us well. And, Lord, we'll give you the praise, honor, and glory, for it is in Christ's name that we pray these things.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from February 5th, 2019, regular scheduled board meeting. Any changes, corrections?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, what's that? Commissioner Fleming, any discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, two through 19. Was there any items that wish to be pulled for discussion?
No.
No?
I've thought about it.
Do I have a motion to approve, two through 19?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item on the agenda is time specific. There's three of those. Move on to staff reports. Scott, Parks, Rec, Airport Manager.
Appreciate the opportunity to come and share a few things with y'all. I'll start with the airports, some, just some small things we got going on. We've got the airshow coming up, the fly-in, Wings Over Swanee, March 29th and 30th. We should have a good, hopefully the weather be good, have a good group of folks there flying in for that. The staff's gonna be at the River Oak for Career Day on Thursday, and as I mentioned before, all the, all the hangars are rented, and we've got a waiting list of about 12 folks waiting on more. As you're aware from the agenda, you saw the different projects we got going on with the fuel and the pass and the new corporate hangar, so we've got quite a few things going on. Got Bill Prang in the audience with us tonight. He's our consultant, our engineer for AECOM, and does a tremendous job for us and squeezes a little bit extra money out of DOT and FAA for us, so I appreciate his support here tonight also. On the recreation side, excuse me, as of yesterday, we, there were a few more openings we had for baseball and softball. We had 333 kids signed up for that, those programs, and this past weekend, we had a adult softball tournament. On Saturday, we had 15 teams in from the, from South Georgia, North Florida, and South, North Florida, South Florida, and also South Georgia. We also had four co-ed teams on Sunday, had a small tournament also. By the way, they, they love the AstroTurf fields and ask when we're gonna get more, so just wanted to let you know also that we got a, received word on a grant, another quarter million dollar grant for more turf fields and some more playground improvement. We'd have to match it, but I'm working on a deal on that too, so. On the grants that we're working on now, the Heritage Park Grant, the Unique Abilities, we're doing the baseball field, and also the expansion of the playground, that's underway now. Making good progress there, and there'll be a pavilion, large pavilion added, excuse me, also for that project. The Heritage Trail's under construction now. If you've gone by and see the, the new light fixtures on the original parts, it looks really good, and then the, we'll go another mile south from Helverson South to the city limits, so it's gonna be a nice project when we get, get done with that. We should be wrapping that up probably in about, about 100 days from now, so it's going well. The, I just mentioned, we, we've got the Phase Two on the Unique Abilities Grant for the Sportsplex, and we're still working on some strategy and some ideas on the South County Trail System down there also. The, we're in the, the Coliseum, we're working on the prep for the fair now, work on some projects there. As I mentioned before, the grant we got to do the arena expansion, we got that on a pause until we get past the fair, then we'll kick that off, and y'all approved the, going out to bid on the shelter and such for the extension last meeting, I believe. So, anyway, any questions? What we got going?
When's the completion date for the rail for trail that you're doing out?
It should be about 100 more days from today.
We're getting a lot of questions, you know, asking what it was, and I can tell them what it is.
It's a new superhighway. It's funny, people, you will hear, why don't we just pave the roads instead of do that? So, but that's a different pot of money, so, just so you're, you're aware.
Okay.
Any questions? Any other questions?
Yeah, just one, and not really related, just curious. You mentioned the Coliseum. How many RV spots do you have out there?
We just had, Mark? We just added 15 more from the, the, was it 15? I'm sorry, 12 additional 50 amps that Westwood paid for. And then we had another, what, 12? 17? Okay.
Okay.
All right. We try to draw people there where we can, but if you, we had a rodeo a while back, a high school rodeo, and there's people everywhere for that, so that's, that's always good.
Good to.
Any other questions? Thank y'all very much.
Before you go, come back real quick, Mr. Scott.
Oh, boy.
You know, sometimes you feel like you get an employee that you're stuck with and you can't get rid of them. They stick around for 30 years, and then some of them, you're glad they stuck around for 30 years. Now, I'll let y'all make y'all's mind up on which one it is, but Mr. Scott's been with us now for 30 years.
Are we taking a vote on that?
And we believe he's done a great job for us. As a little token of our appreciation, we've got a plaque that the board wanted to present to you. I, I'd like for the board to get a picture, we got plenty of time, but. This is presented with much appreciation to Greg Scott, Parks and Recreation Department, for more than 30 years of service to the citizens of Swanee County. Presented by the Board of County Commissioners. Swanee County. Yeah. Yeah.
You want to get all what belongs in there.
All right. Get quiet to get us there. Is there an item on here, Ms. Harris, that you think will take less than five minutes? What about 27? You have anything?
I've, I've got something that'll take less than 35 minutes, is that what you said?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? I can handle that. I passed out an item here, this is, it said Administrator's Comments and Information at the top, so let me just cover that real quick. This Commissioner Richardson had reached out to DOT. You know, on occasion, they will come in and stripe roads in the county, and some of you may recall different years where they've put some funding up and done some striping, and we've kinda helped them decide where they're gonna go. Commissioner Richardson reached out to them, they responded back and asked me what I'm gonna do about it essentially, some striping on County Road 137. So, I responded back that I would discuss it with the Board of County Commissioners because it's a budget item. You may recall that we have a small amount of money in the budget for striping. Most of that funding is gonna be used up on your chip seal roads as we construct those. If you would like, next year, when it comes down to the 12th hour in the budget workshops, and I'll put it on a list for you, we can discuss whether or not you wanna try to put some funding aside or add to that striping budget so that we can stripe more roads than just the chip seal roads. I just wanted to point that out to you. If DOT contacts us like they have in the past and says they have money, we'll let you know. But otherwise, anything that you reach out to them for, they're gonna contact me with it, and we just need to try to figure out how to work it into our budget if, if we can afford to do something.
Ms. Chairman, you live and learn. I, I reached out to them because a month before, I was at the safety meeting, and it was a, it was a question that I posed to them about when they were planning on doing restryping again in our, in our county, and let them know of the problem. This was more or less a request for them to know, understand what the problem is. And I, I've reached out to them before about this, within a year after they striped 137, major parts of it were being just peeled up. I mean, literally, all you had was the outside edges of the lines left in it, and we have a lot of elderly that out, that are out there, and it's difficult to see those lines, so this was more, more requesting them to give me a timeline, because they didn't have it last time, as to when we were going, but didn't realize they'd reach out to you and ask you how to spend it, how to pay for it, but I would like to see if they're not going to be here for a few more years. I'd like to see at least some money in the budget to handle emergency situations like that when we're, especially when we already have people out striping some of the roads that were being done during chip seal, maybe they can kinda handle some of these other problems that we have.
I did put a, I think there's a sheet in yours that just shows that on average, it's about $3,000 a mile, and that isn't using the thermoplastic, which is considerably more expensive, that's painting, but that's just an average number, just to give you an idea.
Have any questions on it?
I, there are only this discussion at the budget workshops, well, what I would say.
Yeah, I'm, I've just added to the sheet.
We can talk for 30 more seconds.
Yeah. You got anything else to say? Go right ahead.
No, no.
That almost got us there.
Was that the only item that you had? Did you get to that?
Yes, sir.
It's about to roll here in a second. One minute, but what is 24? And we'll do it real fast. Consider adoption of resolution regarding intent to use uniform method of collection for municipal services benefit for, for road improvements. Ms. Harris?
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, that's just one of the steps we have to take. If we hit the point where we're actually constructing roads in the current year and plan to use the uniform method of collection, this is for MSBU projects for road improvements.
Any questions from the board on the resolution? None, don't have a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion or anything to be added, Attorney? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. All right, that got us to where we needed to be. Move back up to item 20. At 6:15, as soon as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of LDR 1901, an application by Chris Warshaw, authorization of Jeffrey Ganskopf, to amend the official zoning atlas of the Land Development Regulations by changing zoning classification from Agricultural 1 to Commercial Highway Interchange. At this time, we'll open public hearing, and I'll ask the attorney to swear everyone in that's gonna be speaking or think they'll be speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody in the audience and staff, if you anticipate that you may wanna have something to say about this particular item, would you stand up and be sworn? All right, gentlemen, do each of you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening, will be the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, thank you. As each of you approach the podium, would you please state your full name and address?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, the application that you have before you tonight is a LDR 19-01. It is an LDR map amendment to change the zoning designation for a described property from Agricultural 1 to Commercial Highway Interchange. The subject property is located in Section 6 Township 2 South, Range 14 East. Size of the property, size of the associate, that's associated with this development is a 9.9 acre parcel. This amendment consists of a parcel described as being 4.8 acres in size. The property is within the existing Employment Center land use category that the board created in 2016. It is the intent of the applicant to develop a commercial site. It would consist of a convenience store on the described property. 5.1 acres of the 9.9 is already zoned Commercial Highway Interchange. There's a portion of that that went outside of the Commercial Highway Interchange, and that is what this application is set to amend. If you have your attachments that I included in your, in your packet, you'll have a map that looks like this, a little colored map. It shows the proposed site being outlined in a, a black dotted line, which would be the proposed boundary of the subject site. The area that's shown in red is already zoned Commercial Highway Interchange, and the area that is in green with the slatted red line is the portion of the property which is proposed to be changed from Agricultural 1 to Commercial Highway Interchange. The proposed site is contiguous with the existing CHI zoning district, so you don't have a situation where you have a skip in the zoning, so that we have a, we avoid any type of spot zoning issues. The application went before the Planning and Zoning Board at their January meeting. It was the motion of the Planning and Zoning Board at that time to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the proposed site. The site, I believe, is intended to be serviced by City Utilities. The concurrency management assessment that was previously done for the land use amendment back in 2016 indicated that the level of service standards that were established for I-10 and US-129 will be, continue to be exceeded or met for the proposed development. Driveway information for the proposed site would have to be submitted to the Department of Transportation for their review, as well as the traffic study, to determine what improvements would have to be made to the US-129 roadway to accommodate the accessibility to the proposed site. Mr. Chris Warshaw from CESO Incorporated is present tonight to answer any questions the board has pertaining to the specific site development. He represents his client, which is Speedway, and at this time, if you don't have any questions of me, I will enter the file into the record. You do have a proposed ordinance associated with this application. If the board so chooses to approve the LDR amendment, then they would adopt the ordinance accordingly. If not, then the board will typically state what, what the applicants do not comply with and make the application for denial. But at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Warshaw, and he can present his information to the board.
Mr. Meeks, then I'll take the file in as composite Exhibit 1. I do have a comment, though, on, as part of the record that is, is submitted, on the proposed ordinance that you have as a composite exhibit in the, is that on the second page? I wanna make sure Mr. Warshaw does not want this changed to residential single family.
Good note.
Good note there, right?
Okay, so we'll correct that on the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
I see.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Meeks?
Not a second. You got something? Not a second.
So, as Mr. Meeks explained, I am here representing my client Speedway, as well as a property owner. What they're looking to do here is develop this currently vacant lot into a Speedway convenience store and, and gas station. To kinda give you an idea of the overall property, kind of in the same vein that Mr. Meeks explained, is that there's already, there's two properties that Speedway's looking to develop. One of them, this area kinda here, is currently zoned CHI, so that's the proper zoning. There's a larger 40-acre tract of land that actually has a major gas pipeline that runs through it, which is right here through the middle, and what Speedway's looking to do is kinda go on that southern line of that gas pipeline and, and make that into the CHI zoning to allow for the full development of that, of that site. So, to give you an idea of what they're looking at doing, and, you know, this is really in the pure transparent of what Speedway's looking to do in this property for the rezoning. This is still preliminary nature, there's a lot of working through the DOT. I know we're not really looking to make approvals on the site layout, but just to kinda give you an idea of what's being proposed out there at this time. They're looking to do about a 4,600 square foot convenience store. Convenience store itself will have some fresh fruit offerings inside, as were your normal convenience fare. There'll be 10 automotive fueling dispensers, so the actual fueling canopy will have 10 columns in it, that allows for 20 simultaneous vehicle fuelings at a time. And in the rear of the building, there'll be four lanes for larger commercial vehicles, RVs. Typically, those vehicles can fuel on both sides of the cab, and so it allows a truck to pull in and then fuel both sides simultaneously. What, a lot of questions we get, though, is that this looks like a truck stop, and what I'd like to point out, this is not a truck stop. There are no showers inside, there's no long-term facilities allowed inside that building, so it's a convenience store that has the ability to fill larger trucks. So, the idea is that a vehicle could pull forward, and then they could run inside and get anything. To help comply, due to the nature of it being near the interstate, due to comply with some federal trucking regulations, there are some parking spaces available for a truck driver to pull off to the side and park overnight if needed. But again, you know, we're looking for the rezoning today, so I'd be more than welcome to answer any questions. The rezoning's kinda one of our first steps to getting this, this property developed.
Do I have any questions from the board? From Mr. Warshaw? Any?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm for job creation, and I know probably talked to that point there, but what are the plans of how many employees would Speedway be looking at hiring?
I think, and I'm kinda speaking for Speedway at this point, they typically have a max shift of about eight people, so run three shifts a day, you know, they probably got a staff of around 50 people total, I would, I would assume.
Any other question? And I got one for you. In the design, have y'all consulted with DOT at all?
We've had some initial discussions with them. We're, we're currently in the traffic study phase, and so we've had discussions with, that's kinda where we're at, so there's a lot of moving parts and pieces with them in that, in that regard.
Are they the ones that have led y'all to the two ingress egress sites, or have, have they led anything to, along the lines of one entrance versus two?
We've, we've had discussions with them, and as, mainly, it's mainly if we can meet spacing requirements, then two is, is allowed, and so it's kinda where we're, we're working with them at, is to make sure that, with the traffic study, that it's safe and that it can be fully functional. One of the things that we're looking at doing is because of the current configuration of 129, is any larger vehicles will be restricted to turning left in on the southern access point. Just from a spatial, or not spatial, but like where it is in relation to the others, to the busy bee across the street, busy bee's northernmost access points, where you can actually make a left back out and start heading south again, will align with this driveway here, so the full, the full access, access points for both sites will be making a four-way intersection. So that's one of the reasons why the DOT has requested that the larger vehicles be making most of their left turns at that area, just 'cause the roadway is more capable of handling that.
So your northern spot is gonna come out more farther down, closer to the, the auction site?
Correct.
See, you kinda answered something I was gonna ask. I was gonna ask Mr. Meeks. I didn't know which comes first, the, the traffic study or, you know, because, again, y'all know we have problems out there.
Yeah. Well, that was what I was leading to, is that a traffic study on a Tuesday is not the same as a traffic study when Halloween comes in, or, or Roots Revival, or something of that nature. And we know we'd get congested out there and have people backed up on the, on the overpass, so that, that was where my concerns were coming.
And you just said something I didn't know. If, if that's gonna be like a four-way there, the meetings I've had with DOT, they are absolutely, they say they're not interested. Ms. Harris, I think was there about stopping that traffic on 129, but I mean, if it gets that busy, they may have to, I don't know. It would.
Mr. Prevatt?
Yes, sir.
Would you care to swear me in?
Yes, sir. Raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give to the board this evening, will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir. We're gonna be intimately involved in this discussion on this ingress and egress because of all of the obvious reasons that we continue to have these conversations. It's just so dangerous out there, we have just multitudes of accidents right there on a regular basis. So, I'll go to DOT, and I'll sit in and have conversations with them and track this through the whole process. I mean, personally, I think that more needs to be done to the highway out there and some A-cell, D-cell lanes, and get some of the traffic out of the main drive lanes in order to make these turns. That's one possibility, but I don't know how that will be incorporated into these properties out there, but they really need to get out of the drive lanes in order to make these turns, particularly these big trucks.
I agree with that.
Well, I mean, one thing that we've already discussed with the DOT is putting in a dedicated left turn into the site, so there will, there will be a left turn lane, so vehicles entering the site will get out of the through lanes and make the left turn, so if there's a vehicle stacked up to make a left, especially here, you know, they won't be blocking mainline traffic going north.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying a left turn lane there, if you're headed north?
Correct.
Into the site?
Correct.
But my concern is if you've got three semis trying to turn there in the left turn lane, and you got four semis in the busy bee trying to pull out across that turn lane, how's that gonna, how's that, well, we just?
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's just the concerns.
We just have a lot of problems out there.
Understood, and I, I don't wanna, I don't necessarily get the cart in front of the horse here a little bit, you know, this is, we're looking here to get the rezoning, so there's a lot of these technical details that are still to be worked out. One of the biggest items is getting this rezoned, that really kind of opens the door for us, that, or at least for Speedway, to say, okay, this is a viable property for us to really start spending money to get those design-related questions figured out, so, you know, that, that type of stuff, you know, we'll do intersection design to make sure that vehicles leaving that vehicles leaving the Busy Bee and vehicles entering or leaving the Speedway, there's no conflicting movements there. You know, there's a fair amount of roadway design and improvements that we'll be looking at to see what works and what does not work, you know, both from a traffic management perspective but from a safety perspective, from the ability to ingress and egress the site. I mean, that's a lot of technical details that are still to, very much to be worked out at this, at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, it's opening up more questions now. I attend CTS meetings over in Columbia County with DOT along with Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Hale. I didn't attend this morning due to other reasons, but there is a great concern and an issue. Maybe this could be the answer to our problem with what's ongoing out there, that you do a careful study and a great study be done, because we've had fatalities, we've tried with traffic lights, we've tried with numerous of things. And I hope that, you know, your company look more in detail and get them at DOT, so they can really do a great study out there. I don't know whether they have any plans. I know they said that they wouldn't do anything else much more out there, but I hope that there'll be a great study that's done, because it's dangerous out there.
I mean, and as far as our study, you know, we're not only studying the intersections in this general vicinity, we're also studying both on and off ramps in both direction of the interstate. So I mean, that's all stuff that we're, you know, we're kind of going a little bit further down the road to make sure that any traffic coming off from the interstate is, that that traffic is managed, as also all the way up to and from the site.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of the problems with the piecemeal approach to this is that you end up with piecemeal results in the end, just like we have on the south side of the interstate where every business has a driveway coming and going on and off of 129, and it should not be that way. There should be a parallel access agreement in there with a service road that they're all connected to with a single point of ingress and egress at a traffic light. That's what should have happened years ago, when none of us were here to say that. But I'm saying right now that north of the interstate, it doesn't have to be that way going forward. A question, and I'm going to put Mr. Pravat on the spot, and I've had this discussion in my previous life, is the question of whether or not we can have a conditional approval on a zoning application that is dependent upon the ultimate satisfaction of the traffic study and participation with DOT on what's going to occur going forward, because there's some things that need to occur out there that the county's going to need to require as well as DOT.
As for the conditional rezoning, the answer is no. However, whenever you are looking at the development that is on the property itself, it'll still have to come back. There are a number of conditions that you can then put on the development aspect of the property itself. Some of those aspects, you know, would be, you know, maybe even improvements that R2-129 are contributing to such, because as part of the traffic study, you'll see, you know, what levels may or may not be increased, what, you know, how the traffic flow is going to be affected out there, and you take it in the next step, but not at this particular step.
We just need to make sure, I think, if the board is considering doing this, I would just recommend that we consider what we experienced with the Dollar General, okay? We entered into a development agreement on that because some things needed to occur out there. You might just consider that at some point, we need to have a place at the table when the decision is ultimately made with regard to how this is going to be developed, if the board gets to that point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I agree. I mean, obviously, we all want to see growth and create jobs and things like that, but we, I think you're aware of that, has been a troubled area for us out there, and it continues to grow as everyone here recognizes. It would just be more of a, like a turning lane or a service road would be ideal for future growth as well, but.
As far as, as far as the rezoning, I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want it to get away from us and us not have the ability to come back and address these issues. That's why I bring them up tonight. I know it's really not a key factor in whether the property gets rezoned or not on the ingress egress points at this point in time, but if I didn't bring it up tonight, I didn't want it to slide by us and us not be able to address it.
And so you don't make it a condition, but you make it a requirement that is part of the development of this, that you will require a development agreement with the county, therefore, you can look at all of the different aspects and we can be involved with it.
Yeah, because.
Not a condition, but a requirement.
This is the, this is the time to get it right. We don't want to have to work around something. I'm not saying y'all've got a bad design. We just know what we deal with out there, that interchange, and want to make sure that.
And I know Speedway is part of their purchase agreement. It is to provide access to the remaining portions of the land. The only thing I would ask, if you are looking to make that a requirement, if we can kind of work through the exact location of it, that cross that, that line is a major gas pipeline, so, you know, there's a bit of a sweet spot to find the right place to put that crossing so that it's not, you know, a major impact to a pretty major gas transmission line. So, you know, I don't want to make it that we get tied into a location now, especially at this early stage of it. You know, if we can work through that, you know, at the staff level or with the board, you know, we're the best place to put that, you know, especially working with the landowner and any kind of future plans that he has. But again, Speedway's got, it's part of their purchase agreement to provide access to the remaining portions of that lot, so that's, to make that a requirement, I don't think Speedway's going to bulk at that. That's something that they've already accounted for and doing.
Okay, I don't think, I think we're maybe talking about two different things. What we're talking about is having a requirement that before you do this, we don't want it to be just staff, that does the development and site plan review. We want this to be as part of the requirement, that this particular item comes back for review by the board for a development agreement to, you know, on the site. As for whatever your access is to, you know, adjoining property back there, I guess that can be between Speedway and your owner, you know, at this particular time.
Well, here's what it amounts to. I mean, ultimately, if the board decides in their LDRs to create a requirement for parallel access agreements, then the property owner that owns the parent track would have to enter into that same type of arrangement with us to develop the balance of the property. And I would venture it would be in his best interest to do so, because any other commercial entities that come in and want to purchase a piece to develop, everyone would be served by the same service road and come out to a point far enough, hopefully far enough away from the interstate for another traffic light. And I say another because we're hoping one comes there at the ramps right now, which is also a concern with stacking trucks closer to that, backing them up to the interstate. And the same needs to occur on the other side of 129, so it isn't just the particular side that you've got an application on.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm in agreeance with you. I just, I want to be very clear that we all here know there's a serious issue out there. And like Mr. Harris is saying, we have some ideas of what we want to see. I don't want to mislead them by saying that we're going to change the zoning into thinking that the county, they got the county's blessings to be able to do what they want to do. And I just, you know, I want us all to be on the same page with that, because just if the zoning changed, I mean, there's, there's more issues that, that, you know, just want you to take that into consideration is what we're saying, just.
The zoning change is non-binding for the use anyway.
Right.
You approve the zoning, Speedway decide they want to build another location and protect it.
Right.
So it's not really specific on one designated construction. So the zoning could be approved, and then we know that the board would be involved in the type of staff, you know, our site plan review and development agreement. I think they would be agreeable with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We all know there's problems out there, and I agree 100%. And the last thing I want the public to think is that the board is, in some way, shape, or form, questioning the growth of our county and especially in businesses. And I love competition coming to the, to our neighborhood, because the more competition comes in, the more people come in. The more people come in, the more likely there's going to be someone that stops and stays for a little bit. But having said all that, we also want to understand that the growth of that interstate area is only going to go north, and we need to make sure that we're covering all the bases for the safety of our residents and safety of our, of our community. And so I agree 100% with, back to, Chairman, if you hadn't stepped out and said that first, I would have, that I'm completely good with the zoning change, but I would want to see a requirement that, that you come back to us with a, with a development agreement to understand exactly how it's going to be done, so that we can at least look at it and make sure that we're doing what we need to do for that area. I'd love to see two lights sitting out there. I don't want to see more accidents to justify one light, but they're going to happen. They're going to happen because more people are going to be on that road. Best we can do is just try to make sure that we keep the congestion down and keep the accidents down as well.
Yeah, none of this was brought up opposing growth. It's just, it's all a safety concern. I just want to be clear on that.
Absolutely.
I don't think anybody on this board opposes the growth or the development, but it's no different when the Dollar General just came to the south end of the county that we had to reline that road. It was all due to safety concerns.
Right.
And this is falling under the same thing. Anyone else from the board have any questions for Mr. Warshaw?
I don't.
Do you have anything else for us?
No, you're not.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor to public comments and concerns. Anyone wishing to speak, make your way to the podium, name, address for the record. If you were not sworn in, you'll need to be sworn in. I believe you covered that, didn't you?
Hey, Lucas, wearing a 736 Promenade Point Drive, St. Augustine, Florida, and I'm here representing Busy Bee. I just want to say a couple of things. I know you guys want growth. We want growth, understand that. But I mean, I don't see how we can do this without a stoplight, you know? We just went through the same thing in St. Augustine, Florida, we're building a new site, and we got into the thing, you know, they wanted a stoplight, we wanted a stoplight, but we couldn't, you know, we said DOT determines that, but they actually asked me to say, hey, will you agree, you know, up here, I don't think it was a sworn thing, that you'll put one if they'll allow you? And we said yes. But we definitely want to see a stoplight. It's just, you guys all know, you've been there. I mean, there's, there's so much traffic there. I'm concerned with, you know, slowing it down. How do we get these people so we don't have these accidents? If we do it, you know, we would just think that, I guess it's coming in directly across my exit, a stoplight there. I mean, I think you'd have to have some way to get those people in there and keep them from going too fast, so that's really the only thing I have to say. It's just, I would hate to see this happen without a stoplight.
I don't disagree with you. A stoplight's an ideal thing. I just don't know how we get it.
I mean, DOT ultimately is going to have to say.
Yeah, they're the ones that have to say yes or no to it.
Same way at ours. I mean, I felt like there's no way with the project we're building in St. Augustine that they wouldn't, but still, we can't say, I mean, there's been times we've wanted a stoplight, you know, DOT say, no, you can't have a stoplight. Of course, we want a stoplight, and they'll give it to us. But I mean, this afternoon, you know, sworn true statement, I'm coming, going towards Live Oak from the store, and a semi just went out in front, this car coming, I guess it'd be going northbound, I'm going southbound towards Live Oak. He pulled out in front of that one, and I said, okay, he's going to stop at the median where that guy slams on brakes, but then he just went in front of me, you know? So I actually went off the road to the right. I mean, and it's because there's not a way, a brake for these guys to get out. You know, if we could get those things where it's synchronized and you could get a gap in there, people can get in and out. But if you don't do that, we're going to continue to have accidents. And we've had to have the, you know, we pay for the sheriff's department to come out there and, you know, busy weekends. I mean, it's crazy, that's good for us, and I'm glad, but I mean, it's just, we never anticipated that it was going to be a problem.
And he brought it up before I got to it, but that's one of the things, you know, every time there's a festival, you got deputies out there having to stay there all weekend or as long as the festival, they're directing traffic in and out of the different businesses and off the interstate.
And something we need to look at, I know DOT is working on this. We've had multiple meetings with them, I have, I think some of the other board members have. But you know, we've always been centrally focused on the exit ramps, and now we're growing, so that, I think we need to step back and have them take another look at it. I think the project needs to be larger now. I know that's no concern to y'all, but I mean, but it is. But I mean, I think all that needs to be included, because I'm, I mean, I go out there all the time, and that exit that would be coming out where yours would, that's dangerous, even with one exit right there.
Right, and we, and we really didn't see that when we built it, but I mean, you know, our concern is, you know, for safety, number one, but number two is getting the people in and out. We don't have any problem getting them out. The way the DOT made us do that where you exit out and you're on our end ramp, which is unusual, I don't know why they did it, but that's how they told us to do it. So we can get the people in, we can't get the people out. And if we add something on the other side, and you know, they're going to, they're going to be sitting there looking, okay, I've got a right-hand turn, so I've got right-of-way. Our people are going to sit there and stack up, and they're not going to get that opportunity to get out until they get mad enough that they're going to gun it and go. And that's where you're going to have more problems. So I mean, it would hurt our business if they did this and did not put in a stoplight. So I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it from that perspective. I wouldn't want it from a safety perspective. You know, that's my main concern. I mean, I know you guys want growth, and we want growth, but I mean, it's got to, you know, we had, we had to put a stoplight in St. Augustine, it's a half a million dollars. I don't know why they're so expensive, but that's what we're paying to put one in. So, and you know, we were in an industrial area with an industrial park that had a million square feet of, you know, warehouse space. And evidently, we're the ones that tripped the thing, so it's, okay, you got to pay for it. Okay, well, I don't understand that, but, but you know, so be it. But I mean, I just, I cannot see doing this without a stoplight. That's really all I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Marshall Beck, 12609 State Road 51, Live Oak. Lucas pretty much covered everything about Busy Bee out there, but I work the location all the time. I'm out there all the time, and the traffic problems that I see is when there is a festival, I have to hire the off-duty cops, as he said, $30 an hour, all weekend long to sit there and just direct traffic. And when they are directing traffic, the back, the traffic is backing up, when they have to stop 129 to let the people out of my parking lot, not just another parking lot across the street, but just my parking lot, the traffic backs up all the way down. If you guys know where the, where the auction center is down, it backs up all the way down to the auction center that way, then it backs all the way back up to the interstate on the other end. So I, there's a huge problem there. I think a traffic light's going to do the same thing as a cop. That traffic light's going to turn, traffic's going to back up, the car, the semis are going to get in this turning lane, people, and when it does change, people's not going to be able to get out of our parking lot to get, get to where they're wanting to go. So it's, you know, they are talking two exits out, we only have one exit out, so that's going to kill us. You know, our one exit out is going to be blocked. They can at least go to the north end and get out of their parking lot and get out of the parking lot. Now also, I think when this does happen and it jumbles up like this, I think they're going to get wind of it at these festivals and stuff, and they're going to quit coming 129 to I-10, coming through our area, giving us this business. They're going to go to 129, I-75, and go up to I-10. So that's going to be coming in and going out is what's going to happen. And I just want to put that to you guys tonight. That's a big problem, and I've seen the wrecks out there. I've seen the people that's lost their lives and stuff, and it is serious. I just think we need to really look into it closer, and the rezoning is fine, but DOT's going to have to really step into this thing, and they're going to have to say, hey, this is going to work or not work. But I, I don't know if a traffic light will work or not, you know, if it's so busy out there. Thank you.
You need lanes, yeah. You need dedicated lanes.
I don't mean to be rude, but if you're going to speak, we have to have you at the podium. No, you're all right. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We'll go back to board discussion. I don't think there's any question that the board's looking for growth, looking to move forward. I really, as far as a reason not to approve the actual zoning change, I can't think of one, but I do want to continue discussion on the, the site development, on the ingress egress, on how this is going to play out, and I'll leave it to our attorney for a recommendation on how we get there.
Well, for the, I mean, as I mentioned before, for the rezoning, don't make it, it's not conditional upon that item. It's when you get to the development. It's when you get to the development phase that we have site review and what can go on the site. And that we would direct staff then, that for this particular item and keep you informed that, you know, we're going to require board review rather than just sole staff review because of the, the safety issues that are concerned with the site.
So that won't need to be tied into this motion to approve the?
I don't think so.
The, the change?
For have a developmental agreement with, no, sir.
Okay.
It'll be separate.
All right.
Just be advised.
Any other discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, DOT doesn't work on if we build it, they will come mentality. So we have to build it, I'm talking about roads, that is. We have to bring businesses in and then let them adjust to the businesses. And because of that, I am willing to put a motion on the floor.
To approve the zoning change? Can he make that motion with the enabling resolution?
We need to put a requirement on there now, or?
Approve the ordinance.
Okay, he's making it to approve the ordinance.
Approve the ordinance, yeah.
All right, I got a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance by Commissioner Richardson. I have a second. Do you have a second?
I'll say again.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Yes, sir.
Is it absolutely necessary that we make this decision tonight with the discussions that we're having about the studies that we want done out there? I, I'm, it's just kind of new to me, some of the, some of the issues here and also this zoning change, far as coming up pretty quick. But I'm not going to hinder you from moving forward. I just wanted to express my concern. I got serious concerns out there with safety. And trust me, I'm all about Swanee County and all about seeing great things happen and don't have a problem in the world with Speedway. Now, in Swanee County, I don't know if that piece of property right there is the exact right spot for that with everything we got going there, but I, I got concerns. I had, and some of those concerns are personal. I mean, I had a good friend that was in an accident there and died, lost her life. There's, there's issues more than just business right here to me. So I'm not going to refrain from saying that. That's all I got.
I'll have to let you answer that question on this, if something has to be done tonight or not.
That is up to y'all, since y'all could, I mean, make the, I would just like to point out that, as Mr. Meeks mentioned a while ago, we're talking about changing the map of what things can go out there. We're not looking directly tonight at a specific, specific project. Like Mr. Meeks pointed out, with the zoning change, it could be there, they could build a hotel there.
There's a host of uses, uses that come with that change.
There come with that.
And the change is with the property, not with the project?
That's correct.
I completely.
So when we come to, when the project then comes back to us, we have additional review at that time. And that's when we would look at these other issues for the specific development. And we appreciate you letting us know what's going there, but.
No, I don't have a problem with the change. I mean, the change is going to be made at some point in time or not, as, as the county grows, it's going to be made further on down past that.
Yeah, we can decide at a later point if that's going to fit.
Yeah, that's, that's what I say. I'm fine with the change. The change is going to, I mean, we, we hit these changes all over the county in one lick, one night with five or six different locations throughout the county. So I think it's, I mean, it's the same issue, but tonight, as far as what we're voting on, it's really two separate issues. This is strictly the change and I don't see a problem moving forward with the change. But I do want to have serious discussions on, on the development side of it so that we make sure that, that's going to meet what, what we need as far as safety. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just say that, looking at that map, that that's a very skinny side of this development, how it was set up with the employment center and stuff. And, and I can see that we probably will need in the future to talk about as, as business is considered, expanding that area on that side of the interstate. But that's neither here nor there at this time.
All right. Anything else? Any other discussion? All right, hear no other discussion. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Richardson to approve. I've got a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Do we need a motion far as the developers' agreement?
That'd be a direction to staff when it comes, when it comes. And just like I said, Mr. Warshaw, be just, be advised. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll close that public hearing. Moving on to item 21, at 6:15 or soon thereafter, if the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider approval of budget amendments for 2017 and 18. Ken Williams, Chief Deputy of Finance. All right. Again, we're going to open a public hearing and anyone wishing to speak, go ahead and be sworn in.
How about your other hand? Okay. Anybody else in this matter? You swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening to be the truth self you got?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
I do too, just in case.
You do too?
Yeah.
Okay, each year, we, during our closeout process, we identify funds that have additional revenue in excess of the budget. And so we identify those board funds here. And this year, for the year ending 2018, there were three funds that had excess revenues. So it's kind of a formality that we go in and adjust the budget to equal the excess revenue and expenses of those funds. Three funds are the State Attorney Fund, Tourist Promotion Fund, and the Local Housing or Ship Fund. The State Attorney Fund had excess revenue of $15,279, same number of excess expenditures. Tourist Promotion Fund had $8,960 of excess revenue. And the Ship Fund had $33,490 of excess revenue. So we need this budget amendment approved so that our budget numbers will equal our actual numbers.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Williams? All right. Does anyone from the public wish to speak or make a comment? Yes, ma'am, you have to stand up, be sworn in.
Raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening to be the truth self you got?
Thank you.
Thank you. And would you, if you wish to speak, would you step to the podium, please?
Step to.
I have a question on what are ships from, or the housing?
Housing.
Could you explain those, because those are things that people get, that's the balance of, of underspend?
Well, those, those revenues come from the state and there were additional applicants that ended up getting additional funds that it were more than the original budget. So we have to adjust the budget.
Yes, sir. If you have general questions about the program, if that's what your questions are and you want to.
Well, it's both. It's excess revenue that came in, actually, there were loans from, repayments from clients. A lot of this stuff is hard to project when we're doing the budget. So we.
There may be a house that sold early and they had to repay back a portion of their loan that they took off the ship. There may be somebody that went into foreclosure on it. It could be a host of reasons.
There's a lot of, and, and usually ship is in there every year.
Yeah.
Because it's the nature of that fund, hard to predict.
The answer to the question is, we didn't underspend what was budgeted.
We had more money.
No, we, no, we increased the budget.
And more money came in.
More money went out.
What, what we anticipated. Any other questions for Mr. Williams from the board? Hear, hear none. Is there anything, am I missing anything on this one?
No.
They have a motion to approve the changes?
I'm to approve.
Want a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Second. Second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this time, we'll close public hearing. That's a 5-0 vote. All right, at 6:15, soon thereafter, if the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider the enactment of the ordinance naming the Board of County Commissioners as the initial membership of the Utility Board. Jimmy Pravat, Mr. Harris will be presenting this one, but at this time, we'll open the public hearing and swear anyone in that wishes to speak at this one.
Is there anybody that has not been sworn on another matter this evening that wishes to speak on this matter? I'd see none.
You're still sworn in, Mr. Harris.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll, I'll give you the summary version of this. Many years ago, before Mr. Pravat was the county attorney, I found myself having to do more than my job. So I drafted a utility ordinance for the county and the county commission adopted it. And there were some pieces that I knew that we would have to revisit later because they were going to become necessary in order for us to operate as a utility. And the utility needs an operating board. So my recommendation was that we establish a utility board and have the county commissioner serve in that capacity. So thus the ordinance that you have before you today, you would, when business decisions need to be made for the utilities that we have, it would come to the Board of County Commissioners. And if you have those meetings during a regular meeting, you would adjourn your meeting or you would start this one before you start your regular board meeting and handle the business decisions of the utility and vote. And then you would close that meeting and go into your regular meeting.
Same way we do the fire assessment and the garbage assessment.
Most efficient way to handle it.
Good.
So that's the purpose of this tonight.
And, excuse me, I'll make a note in here, he keeps saying board and I just liked the word authority. So I put authority in the ordinance instead of board and I'll just bring that one up. However, y'all would like to call yourselves.
Any questions?
No, sir.
From staff, no. At this time, call for public comments, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Make your way to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. The board doesn't have any discussion. Do they have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Last chance for discussion. Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Pacify vote, this time we'll close public hearing. All right. That was the last one of those. Thank y'all for bearing with us. They're tedious, but we got to follow a certain protocol. We will jump down to now item 25, discuss possible board action, non-ministerial services benefit chip seal roads. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I sent you a schedule that is simply a reflection of our history with chip seal roads and where the monies have been spent and what we're going to try to accomplish in the current year. One thing I will tell you, I've already mentioned this to some of the Commissioners, I'd like for all of you to know that my plan at the end of the current fiscal year is to ask to roll any unused monies over into the same chip seal line for next year in addition to any other funds that we agree or the board agrees to put in during the workshops when we get into the budgets this year. Because we may or may not finish all the projects in the current year.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I completely agree with that because as we've seen with our first year, we have a certain amount of projects which I had to approve during that year, but those projects roll too. You know, we went right on into the next year on that first set of projects, so the funding needs to roll with them.
Right. And our ability, so far as timing goes, is certainly impacted by storms and, you know, the demand for maintenance on our unpaid roads throughout the county. So we are working on the base for these chip seal roads in addition to our routine maintenance. So all of those factors will have an impact on whether or not we accomplish the list of chip seal roads that we set out to accomplish. One other thing I want to mention to you is that we have lists of roads that Commissioners have turned in to us. And I will have conversations with each of you and, as you know, because I've told all of you at this point, we will be reconciling those lists with our own staff lists of roads that require the most maintenance. Those are the types of roads if we can chip seal them and get them out of the way, then we can spend more time with our graders and trucks on the roads that need the graders and trucks on them, more so than the roads that we could chip seal and just get out of the way. So I'll be bringing back to you task orders with the company. You know, we bid this surface treatment out last year. The numbers are still holding. So I'll come back to you with, to you with task orders later for board consideration with the company that actually performs the chip seal surface treatment.
Yeah, and I'll just add to what you said about the maintenance side of it. Back in, when we originally started them and started the discussions in 15, 16, and then started their projects since 16, 17, that was the main goal, was to look for roads that was tying up the graders, either in a lot of short roads where they're having to drop the blade, go down there, three-point turn, turn around, go back just to cover quarter mile dirt road or washouts. The, we were trying to free up our graders as much as possible so that, for the rest of the roads that they could actually get out on there and go, that, you know, they were getting more rounds per month than, than previous what they were. So just keep that in mind when recommendations come back from the staff that may not really line up with roads that some of us won't because they know what we get our, our most frequent calls from maintenance on. And I mean, that may not be the intention of this board, but that was the original intention of the overall project when we, when we started it out. And I think it was a good intention for it to keep moving. That way it frees up our, our graders. And it helps take the slack off of us because if you just start randomly picking roads, you don't really have a reason to say to one person, well, no, I can't do yours, but yes, I did yours. Falling back on maintenance gives us something to stand on where you can point to and say, well, this is a high maintenance road that we're trying to shore up some of that maintenance and keep them off of. That was all.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point something else out. I did some very elementary math on this question. You know, we keep asking, well, is my road on the list?
Yeah.
Suffice it to say that every unpaid road is on the list.
Every one of them. You can put that in the paper, they are on the list.
If we do seven miles a year, it'll take us about 122 years to get them all done.
Put that in there too.
So we're asking people to be patient.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to frame this in the, this, these words around the passion plea of a family that came a few, a couple, about a month and a half ago, about a road. That is a long road that, it needs attention. I'll just put it that way. And what I'm, what I want to say is, is we had approved $500,000 out of, in our workshop, well, in our budget. We talked about $500,000 in the workshop that we spent on this year's chip seal road. $159,000 of that money was taken in roads that were carried over from last year. And, and I know why, it's because we didn't have an agreement to carry it, to roll those funds forward. So everything went right back into the, into general fund and contingency. I just think that we could do a lot more with that full five hundred thousand than we would with the three hundred and forty-one thousand, that's less than here. And I would respectfully ask the board to consider adding that money back into this year's program. The framing of that, by the way, is because we have roads like that, that also need to be handled as well, that are maintenance roads, are maintenance roads, but also deal with a lot of residents and a lot of truck traffic on it. And our graders are out there constantly fixing and repairing these roads because the chicken trucks going back and forth on them or tearing them.
Understood. At this time, I'm not, I'm personally not ready to consider putting a hundred and fifty-nine thousand back into it, just frankly, because I don't know where it's going to come from or where we're at, going to be at in the course of the year, and we kind of build our budget around it as it currently is.
Then may I ask that we just simply look for some money somewhere, somehow, to consider, maybe at a, I don't know, later date?
I don't have a problem looking for it, I mean, if we, if we got some unanticipated revenue coming in, or, I'm, I'm open to it. I don't want to get in the habit of though, picking and choosing roads based on who shows up with the most amount of petitions or
I agree.
Anything of that nature, because like I said, it's, the criteria needs to be set that we're going to pick from a maintenance issue.
I absolutely agree.
Not, not who can pack the room.
Well, no, no, and, and I've been down that road several times, and, and it's got problems, it's got problems on right-of-way, it's got trees that are growing, I mean, large, large oak trees that are growing right up against the, and there is, you know, there's going to be problems even chip sealing the road, so, and I've discussed that with those members of that community, and I know they understand it. And if we can't do it this year, I can understand that because of funds, but I certainly would think that would be a good idea to start planning ahead and start looking at roads that are next on the list, or that are, further down, that will require some additional work in the future.
All right. Anything else?
Anybody have anything they want to add to that?
Because I think we're just talking about, at this point, we're just talking about funding. We're not funding in allocations per district, correct?
No, the schedule now shows what we are anticipating to be done, to make sure that staff handles the funding uniformly across all districts. Every district has more roads than we can fund, I mean, I think everyone would agree with that. So we try to monitor this, keep track of it, so that we're ensuring that we're trying to uniformly apply the funding across the entire county.
What I meant was, was the schedule being this sheet of paper right here that has breakdown on the per-district amount?
Where it says projected, that's what we're projecting to do in the current year. Now again, we do have challenges trying to, to build all the roads that we've got funding for in the current year. But then we could potentially roll that over during your budget workshops when they come around.
That's why I say these projects, don't, don't get hung up on these projects have to be done in eighteen, nineteen. I mean, with the weather and everything else that comes on, and us building the base, I mean, we still are not, we're still not caught up from all the rain, we still got roads underwater.
Absolutely.
I get, and I mean, those are our first priorities, so these roads may get pushed into next year, may get pushed into the year after that. All we're suggesting is that if the roads are rolling over from year after year, that the funding rolls with them, so that when we do catch up, the, the funding's there.
Absolutely.
We're not scrounging around for it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask that maybe staff could take a look at these numbers again? I think Mr. Harris made a mistake on mine. I got, I got, Commissioner Hale's got a hundred and eighty-one thousand to work with, and I got twenty-three. I just, I don't know if Mr. Harris maybe overlooked something.
Freshman.
I understand being at the
Calculator that was made in a foreign country, but we could, we could try another one.
Did you see them other boxes where Commissioner Hale didn't have anything?
That was way before my time.
Now
But I understand, I'll start at the bottom and work my way up.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about one thing.
Yes, sir.
The, I know Commissioner Hale had small projects that were done the end of this, end of the year that was finished this year, is that correct?
Mine were all very small, I, I just tried
Were they all done last year?
Yeah, everything was done, I mean, finished up.
They were
They were last year's projects.
Projects, but they were finished right at the, the end of the last year, or right at the beginning of the new year.
Yeah, even when we finish them, sometimes it can be a month or more before the company comes and does the chip seal.
So is, is, were they built out of the five hundred thousand, what the question is, is were they built primarily out of five hundred thousand dollars for this year, or they built out of
Yes.
Because
They were built out of this year's.
Okay, so the hundred and eighty-one thousand is inclusive of those numbers, of, of those roads that were already done?
No. No, 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 no.
Because I see thirty-nine thousand in seventeen, eighteen.
Well, the seventy, okay, that's when we performed our work, I couldn't tell you right now what the date was that the work was actually performed by the company, but the invoicing came into the current fiscal year.
Okay.
So that's why we had to pay it out of the new approved budget after October one. So no, this hundred and eighty-one doesn't have anything to do with the thirty-nine.
So that thirty-nine was actually the roads he had done?
Right, and we did that, there were some others that were, it wasn't just those, there were some others that were done toward the end of the year.
Yeah, and Commissioner Gamble had one
Some, yeah, some in District Three, they're all
Yeah, I think we did hundred and seventy-sixth first, and fifty-eighth maybe, in that curve where we kept having wrecks, and then we worked through some of the others.
I don't even think I had a mile with all my small routes.
I, I think Commissioner Stapleton, your, your complaint
Is really, if you subtract the twenty-three from the thirty-nine
The ninety-five thousand was spent before.
Commissioner Hale, cry me a river.
What, what action are we needing to take on this, Mr. Harris? Do you have a recommendation?
I'm just giving you an update, Mr. Chairman.
It's just an update.
If, if the board has a different opinion on how we plan to spend this money, other than the way that this chart shows it, I need to know that. But otherwise, I, I want to let you know that all of you gave me roads that far exceed our ability to pay in the current year and even in next year. We are working with that list, and we'll be in touch with you, and together, we'll reconcile that with the highest maintenance roads in your district.
I, I don't have the problem with it, it's, these projects continue to roll, this, it's a uniform mess that across the county. I mean, I know we joke around about districts, but we really serve the entire county. And this, it's a fair approach, the way we have staff working on it, and the way they're trying to allot the money so that it's equally spread across the entire county, rather than it getting lopped up on one side or the other.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd add one more thing, because I've said this before, and I think there would be wrong to overlook it. I know that we're really concerned about the high-maintenance roads that are great, the graders are having to go back to, and I've got some, obviously, Debbie provided me a list last time, and it was three months, and it looked like the whole year, and it was like, that thick, I mean, really? And so, we've got those roads to deal with, and, and for the public's sake, understand that if you live on a graded road, and you get your road graded once every two, or once every three weeks, rather than once every two weeks, it's probably because somebody in your district or in your area has a road that's constantly being called in on. So that would speed this process up. But having said that, we also
He's getting his graded every two weeks?
Really?
Making notes.
My guy's good, then. I don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's a lot of those sand-mix roads out there that are, you know, people live on, and people have the, they're worse than the, than the, they're worse Oh. I know That's the, that's the decision that, that's the, the, I'm sorry, that's the statement that most people from around here make, but that's not the statement that people move around when they come in. But I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the sand-mix roads that are, that are falling completely apart, and all we can do is send somebody, the inmates out there, to throw, throw asphalt in there. Those are roads that also need to be looked at as well, they're normally short roads.
They do, but I think that the worst sand-mix road you can think of sometimes is better than, than a good dirt road. I mean, we already seen that when we tore one up
One seventy-six, yeah.
And then went in there and rocked it, and thought they were going to shoot you.
I agree, I, I agree, I agree with that, but I also understand that there's, because some of those roads are going to be in that list because of that.
Well, some of those sand-mix roads have actually been paved with asphalt using DOT funds as well. Bearbell Church Road is one, and Central Road, a portion of that until they ran out of funding. I will tell you, though, that your grader operators oftentimes are out there performing miracles, literally.
They are.
I mean, they do a fantastic job. My wife and I were out riding the other day, and we went down a, a few unpaved roads, and later we got on Hundred Eighty-Fifth or Falmouth Road and went down, when we turned back toward town on Mitchell Road, her comment was, my gosh, this road is rougher than a lot of the unpaved roads that we've just ridden on. And that was a fact. I mean, that's a road that needs to be reconstructed, but it's on the list with DOT. So we clearly have more need than we have funding
I'm making motion.
All the way around.
I agree.
Does anyone else have anything to add on this item?
No, sir.
I think everybody's, maybe not everybody, but most of us are okay with it.
Mr. Chairman, you know it's some quiet, because I don't have to worry about this.
You don't. All your roads are paved. All right, I've been drinking coffee the whole time we're in here, so we're going to take a short break. I got to use the restroom. All right, we'll pick right back where we left off, item twenty-six, discuss with possible board action, multiple topics associated with the Douglas Center. First up, Mr. Ford, he's got, wants to speak about a memorial or legacy park in National Registry. Mr. Ford.
Good evening, I'm Robert Ford, and my address is eighty-eight, ninety-six, one thirty-fifth Loop, Live Oak, Florida. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Board, and Audience, and my fellow Douglas alumni that sacrificed and came out this evening. I want to thank Mr. Harris for getting us on the agenda. The first item, we requested the county to approve a request to build a, a memorial, a memorial legacy park, and I assume that you got a copy of the drawings in front of you. We are requesting to do this project on the old swimming pool area, if you're familiar with that. If you're familiar with the Douglas Gym, it's, it's a little playground there with a concrete barrier there that was a swimming pool back in the sixties and seventies, I guess in eighties, and I left here in the late sixties, so I'm not sure when it closed down. And in coordination and collaboration with the Parks and Rec, Greg, has indicated that they're going to be building a new playground on that facility, and they're going to be moving that equipment that's currently on that playground, on that pool playground, which we are asking for permission to build this legacy park. And it will be similar to the drawing that you have in front of you, but we have kind of modified it a little bit, to kind of change it around a little bit, but it would be basically the same layout that you have here, with some brick pavels that we can engrave, and, and we've, have lots of enthusiasm from the community and our alumni for this project.
Mr. Ford.
Yes, sir.
Could I interrupt you for one second?
Yes.
I just want you to know that, when I look, I've got a piece of that drawing that showed up
That's all I had.
That's all I had.
And I apologize for that, I didn't realize it, but for some reason, it blew it up when we ran it, and it's only showing a part of it.
Okay, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I got some smaller copies that I could give to board members if I can approach.
Here's what
Just give us one, we can share. You have enough?
You have enough, okay.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize, I didn't realize that it happened.
Continue, sir.
Okay, like I said, this is a kind of outline of it, we're going to modify it a little bit to, those crosswalks, those are going to be sidewalks, the only thing we'll actually have, the brick pavels will be the center portion of it, to cut down on the number of brick pavels. As it shows now, when we got an estimate on it, it was about sixty-five hundred bricks, you know, to be engraved, so we want to cut that back, so it'll be about thirty-five hundred once we finish the project, and those other areas, the side, areas that moves in from the four directions, will actually be just concrete sidewalks. And another modification, the plan is showing that, that it will be gravel, lime rock on the outside of it. Of course, Parks and Rec is saying, you know, that's a kind of bad idea, because kids will be throwing rocks, so that will be mulch or grass will go on those other open areas there. And this will be done at our expense, with donations from the community and the project that we want to take on.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Ford about this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ford
Yes, sir.
Who would maintain, would Parks and Recations maintain this park?
I don't see a lot of maintaining, but I, I'm, we are willing to assume responsibility of maintaining it.
Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is this, this is where the pool is? Isn't that right?
So they're going to take the equipment out of the pool, and you're wanting to put this inside the actual pool area, or is it to be
Well, the pool has been filled in.
Right.
Right, it's filled in, right, it's just got, it's got a couple of sliding boards and jungle gym
Yeah, I'm saying, are you using the outside perimeter of
Right, 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 exactly, right.
As the border.
It's the border, right.
Okay.
Right, right. That, that outside border will, will stay there.
Right. That's all I had.
Okay, I'm just thinking, I, I don't have a problem with the memorial park, I just don't know where the location is yet, because I still don't know, I'm not at the speed on where we're going to put or replace the park that we got the grant for. I don't, I don't have a problem with y'all doing it, I just, I'm going to need more information on it. And I don't know if that's the right location, wrong location, I would completely rely
I will yield to Mr. Scott.
I've seen him make
Mr. Ford and I talked one day, and we walked and looked, and I suggested that spot for Memorial back months, months ago. The playground would be, not in that same area, be close, but not, but right next to it, so it'd be plenty of separation, so somebody could sit, stand there and reflect, and the kids could be playing in a different area, so I think it would work out, work out fine.
This won't, this won't tie in at all to the, to the marker that we had put in that y'all purchased a while back?
No, sir, the marker, it will be offset from that. That will be a consideration later on, if we want to move the marker over there in that area, because that is controlled by the state, we will have to go into the State Historical Resources Commission in order, actually, to request that we remove it and have some justification if we want to move the marker.
All right. So, Mr. Scott, just, just thumbs up or thumbs, you, you were okay with it going right there in that location? That's all I had. Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Fleming, did you have anything or any concerns?
No, I'm, I'm fine, good, good.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Well, if we allow it, do we need any conditions or anything that you need to work through?
Yes, sir, I mean, I was just fixing to mention that one of the things, because it'd be working on the it'd be working on the county property and individuals be on and off, we'll have to have some type of agreement to be able to do that. Probably, I'll check with our insurance agent. You may have to have, you know, small liability policy while you're doing the work on it. But then, once it's completed and then we take over, you know, the maintenance of it, you know, that would revert. But, so we need to have, you know, a short agreement about what's gonna happen and timing and, you know, that type of thing.
This agreement will be prepared by your office or just?
Yes, sir.
Nope.
Do you have any questions, suggestions or anything, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Richardson, you have anything?
No.
Need a motion?
Yeah. If you're gonna make a motion, I just ask that you include the agreement.
Yes.
Be prepared by the attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this with the condition of, obviously, the agreement being preparation. Will that agreement have to come back before the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion on it? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The next item is a request to submit a preliminary site information questionnaire, questionnaire on the Douglas Center, to place the Douglas Center on the National Registry. And what that is, is that, you know, the Douglas Center is already recognized by the state as a historical site. And what we're asking is to, seeking to try to get some federal recognition. The process is that we submit a application, like I said, it is called the preliminary site information questionnaire. All that is, is you submit this little one-page sheet with some attachments that goes through the history of the property and things like this. And it goes to the Department of Historical Preservation. And then, they will determine if they feel that it meets the criteria for the, for the National Registry. And once that is approved, they think it is approved, then they will come back to the property owner and the elected official. And this circumstance would be the Board of County Commissioners to let them know and to put comment on, on the property. If all of that goes, then it goes to the, full application will go to the Historical Preservation Division in Tallahassee. And if it passes that step, and then it goes to the National Heaps of Historical Places at the National Park Service in Washington, DC. And through all the steps on this, they will come back in writing to the owner of the property and the elected officials keeping you informed in the process.
Alright. Anyone have any question about that?
Yes, sir. Do you know how long, it sounds like a very long, arduous process.
They say four, four months to a year, but it is a long, the board meets quarterly in Tallahassee. So, whenever, I'm not sure of the time and process, the timing of it, if we get it prepared in the next 90 days or so, it may be just after the board meets, it may be another three months before the actual boards meet in Tallahassee to consider the likelihood of the property being designated or meet the criteria for National Registry.
I got one question, but it's for the attorney. If applying to put something on the National Registry or something being placed on it, does that then limit our use and future use of the property?
Yes, sir, it does. If you recall, the building that we have down here at the Passenger Depot, with the Historical Commission, it being designated as one of the historical buildings, whenever you go and you do anything on the property, and especially if you're gonna be looking at a large site like this, and we've got other things that are already planned, you know, to be there, if they don't get constructed in the meantime, it becomes problematic to go through a long and, a longer and more arduous process to be able to do any work on the property, period.
Court, oh, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is to counsel. The question that I propose, with this happening, that would limit anything from happening on that site.
It could, it could limit whatever is gonna happen on the site.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I put some attachments with the request, and if you, I'm not sure if you have that in front of you, that's from the State Division of Preservation. And what it says is that listing in the National Registry or being determined eligible for listing does not automatically preserve a building and does not keep property from being modified or even destroyed. So, it does not prevent you from doing anything or going through with some future plans of tearing down buildings and all of this, all of these items. It does not do that.
I would submit to you, Mr. Ford, that by listing it, it is correct that you make a correct statement, that it doesn't prevent you from doing something, but you have to get permission and go through a process to get permission to do anything you want to do with the building, including, you know, the items that you did.
That was gonna be my question, is once you put it on a state or federal list, it's the ownership of the county, but then the county has to seek permission of the state or the federal government, whoever lists it's on, to do anything of the property. Would that essentially be what?
Essentially, that's correct.
You know, the only thing I know is that it's what is published in their publications.
I understand. I understand.
This is what they say.
I can read that off the internet as well. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's impossible, but it moves at the speed of probably, likely it won't happen if you did want to do something, because it's just gonna have to go through a lengthy process. But anyway, continue.
I'm finished with that subject. I just wanted to add to what I, what I read on the, like Mr. Pravet says, on the website. And, and, you know, that's all I have, you know. If they're, if they're wrong, then they need to change their.
It's not wrong, Mr. Ford. I think it's just not complete to give you the full sense of how things, you know, really happen under the program.
Yeah. And I do know, like with the, with the, was it the Train Depot, that we are limited to hardly, we can't do any upgrades, modifications or anything to it, really. I mean, you gotta hold the original integrity of that building.
Right. I know. That's because that building is, is on the State Historical Registry in terms of maintaining the historical integrity of that building. That is not what the Douglas Center is about, maintaining those buildings. Some of them buildings gonna have to go. You know, I'm the first one to admit to that, you know. All we got to do is just kind of, you know, come to agreement on what we going to keep and what needs to, you know, come down on it. And, but it's not my intention to, and I don't think it will prevent us from going forward with that plan on, you know, doing something to that site.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ford, I know this has been ongoing for quite a few years, the conversations you've had with the board. With me coming on, you know, just recently, could you give me just a brief summary of what you would like to see happen with that site there? Just so I know kind of your position, because I know everybody's got a lot of things going on in their mind. And if I kind of knew where you was at, I would feel better about what I'm looking at here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stapleton. What I would like personally, I would like to see that first wing help and maintain, to kind of maintain the, I might say, the first wing that would be on the north end of the campus there by Douglas Street, that, that first wing. And the third whole wing, which is that, what we call the cafeteria and the library. So, the rest of it, and become that second complete wing and the, and the other wings, in my view, it, it needs to come down for we could have more property for parks, outside basketball courts, and whatever Parks and Rec and the county want to, you know, do for that facility. And the rest of it, I think, just need to be mothballed and, you know, until grant funding or other opportunities come along that may refurbish it. But it just need to be mothballed, you know, those ones that stay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I see you got an attorney and Parks and Rec. Is he through?
I was, I was letting him get through his request real quick and then, or not real quick, but getting through them. Mr. Ford, I don't know how the rest of the board feels on this one. I just don't know enough about the National Registry. I don't wanna move forward with it tonight, because I don't wanna limit us on anything in the future until I know exactly what, what it is. I just knew enough about it to know that if we do get on it, that it possibly could limit us. And I would want some definite clarification from them that it wouldn't before I'd ever consider it. And that's where I'm at. I don't know where everybody else would be on it.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I somewhat feel the same way. That's why I asked, asked the question of what Mr. Ford was considering there, because if we grant him his wish to go ahead and move forward with that, then basically, I don't see where anything can happen. So, I'm in agreement with that at this point.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ford, is there anyone in particular you've been talking with here?
Yes, I talked to.
Maybe we could reach out to it and?
Right. I talked to the, I guess he's the chief of that division, Mr. Andrew Weber on the Florida Division of Historical Preservation.
What was his name again? Andrew Weber?
Right. W A B E R.
Did anyone else have anything they wanna add on the National Registry?
Yes, I, but I wanna say something as a air commissioner about the National Registry. I have some concerns about that because of potential, future potential that, that there.
That means it's the wish of the board to hold off on that until we possibly know more about it?
I would feel better.
Okay.
I would, too.
I would.
Alright. Did you have anything else, Mr. Ford?
No. Is there anything I could do to set aside any concerns about our control over the property? Or is there something that you're gonna do and get back? Or can, anything I could do to reach out to someone and?
If you'll email me the contact information to the individual you've been talking to.
Okay.
I'll touch base with Mr. Pravet and see if we can't get some answers. That would satisfy me a little better.
Okay. Good deal. Anything else?
No, sir. Alright. Under the same item, we just kept stacking it on here. Got, I don't know who wants to present first or talk first, Mr. Harris, Mr. Bat, Mr. Scott, or Mr. Fleming in regards.
I'll wait till they get through.
Sorry?
I'll wait till they get through.
Okay. We talked, so moving forward now, we wanted to discuss Parks and Rec opportunities at the Douglas Center.
You know, if you look where we are now with that, that space, I've got some, it's true concerns. There's been a lot of events over there, May Day events, Martin Luther King events, car shows, different things. And we've got a lot of building over there now with, with what's sitting there. It scares me. It just, all it takes is one bad experience over there and none of us are gonna look good. That's why I've always said, we'll do things on the other side of the road, but when it comes to those buildings and such, I don't, my people engage in that, you know, it's just too dangerous. The, you know, if we had a clean slate over there, you know, there may be areas that need to be reserved. I know that with historical grants and such, a lot of times, there's limitations on what you can and can't do, you know. We need to take, I've shared this with Mr. Ford before, you know, the legacy of what was there is important to preserve. But with the, with the memorial park and that kind of stuff, that's certainly a piece that does part of that. If we, if, we would love to have more baseball fields and basketball courts, outdoor courts and that sort of thing. The thing I've learned over the past several years with the, with the events we've had over there, I say we, we've just applied some, some help with those, you know, different groups, you know, individuals have done the, done the work. We just provided things. But I realize that there's an attachment to that space for that neighborhood. And it's important for us, I think, to take the active recreation elements to the neighborhood. And I think we need to have some, if we're involved, some town hall meetings and see what the neighborhood would like to see. You know, is it baseball fields? Is it basketball courts? Is it whatever? We're somewhat limited in what we can do the way it's laid out now. Even the softball area that we have now is very limited. You don't have a full distance on the fence on the right field. It goes into the, to the outfield, or the outfield goes into the, the football area, which is fine. You're not doing both at the same time. And we're working on the, on the east end, working toward the west end, making improvements. We've written another grant to do more. But if it was a, if all the buildings were gone, I'm not, y'all's call what direction y'all go, but if all the buildings were gone, then we could do topoes and we could do conversation with the community and see what it is that they'd like to see. You know, did a little diagram where you got the engineers who've done some working on there before to put in your packets some ideas and such, understanding that the, the, whatever we do, we gotta look at topoes and water management, that kind of stuff. Quite frankly, I like to see if we're involved in that emergency management, folks not there either. But that's a longer term deal. We gotta have them there for, for a period of time. But the biggest thing is about the kids, you know. It's about the children and what, what their needs are. The sad thing is, when Mr. Ford and, and alumni are gone or not with us anymore, you know, have we left something to leave a legacy? And I've shared with Mr. Ford before, there's some professional companies out there that do nice kiosks and such that tell a story. You go to national parks and that sort of thing, Grand Canyon, you've got a kiosk there that tells a story. Those kind of things live a lot longer than we do. But, yeah, you know, we'd love to have more opportunities. I think the neighborhood would like to see more opportunity. But quite frankly, with us having events there, the Martin Luther King Day just recently, May Day that's coming up, when we're drawing people there and people wander around in the other parts of the school and reminisce, you know, I'm not the attorney, but we're opening ourselves up to some, some major issues, I think. So, you know, again, whether we have buildings or don't have buildings, I mean, you know, I went to school there, too. I don't have the same attachment that Mr. Ford does, because it was different and our knowledge is different. But, but, you know, opportunity for kids to have more area to play and in a safe environment, I think that's, that's the important part that we, that we need to work for. Any questions that I can answer?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Would that be an appropriate place? I know me and you, when we went out to Perry and talked to, and looked at some of the parks and stuff, we saw the splash pad in that one place. Would that be a place that would be appropriate for splash pad in that area somewhere? Because that seems like that would just attract kids and families like you would believe. It's just a thought. It's just a thought.
It could, it could.
I know we talked about environmental concerns and some of the requirements, regulations with things like that, so.
Right. I'm going to ask you a question completely, just, I know you'll be having to pull a number off the top of your head, so I mean, I'm not going to hold you to it.
Right.
But just, let's say in the last two to four years, the rec department, as far as applying for recreational grants.
Right.
Y'all's success rate's been pretty high.
Right.
I can think of one grant that was over, well, actually it's two grants, one for the city, one for the county, but it's combined through your department, that was a million dollars.
Right, right.
You just mentioned tonight a $250,000 grant.
Right.
We've already been approved a $50,000 grant for the Douglas Center.
Right.
Playground. And I know there's several that I'm missing because it seems like probably y'all's department is probably one of the best in the state at acquiring grants for the kids to increase the size of the facility, to enhance the facilities. And I bring that up just the availability of the money for parks and rec is there to make something extremely nice.
Right.
I'm not talking about a piecemeal and a playground together, I'm talking about if we had a place to really, a site to designate and say, "We're going after it." I can't say that you would be successful, but your track record proves that you could be successful. A lot more successful than if you, I think if you did a percentage across the state of historical grants being approved. And I'm only bringing that up, I think the pot of money that's there for restoration and preservation, dollar for dollar, is a lot less than parks and rec. The state of Florida has been tremendously generous over, I know my term and a half on the board of the monies that they have provided to Swan County in Live Oak. And I don't see why this would be any different. I mean, would you agree or?
Well, yes, we can, these grants, you know, we can write 50,000 a year or do a Phase One, Phase Two and do 100,000 a year fairly easily. You know, when the economy takes a nosedive, those things dry up some, but when it ticks back up, the legislature likes seeing these for that grants because they can see something when they go back home.
Right. And I can't give you all the credit for that. I mean, Mr. Ford has served on that rec board with you for a number of years, so I mean, I'm sure he had a lot to do with it too.
Absolutely, absolutely. A lot of support and a lot of guidance, you know, they've done a great job.
He's been a tremendous asset to you. I mean, he knows what I'm talking about when I talk about these grants and the red availability of it. I just, I just wanted people to hear that, that where the money's at, it's not that there's not money, it's just not an allowable use for certain areas. It has to, it's earmarked by legislature on where it can go and what it can be used for. And that's the pots of money we have to go after sometimes is the ones that are the easiest to get.
Well, the thing, it's about pride. You know, we need to take pride in that space and start making improvements that we need to make. And hopefully, when I got the plaque tonight for 30 years, first part we worked on was that little one on the corner where that playground equipment is, that's been there that whole time. And that's our oldest one that I worked on whenever I got here. That needs to go. And it's nice that somebody's going to take that space over and maintain it and make it work. But, you know, we want to make it better, we want to take pride in what we do, and we're trying to start on the east side and work our way to the west side as fast as we can.
Mr. Chairman, one more question.
Yes, sir.
I'd agree with every aspect of Mr. Scott, does a great job. But one thing he said about the buildings out there, and I'll just repeat it, said it last year, said it, I think, when I first got on board, I said it to Mr. Ford when he took me on a tour of the place, that that's a, from a legal perspective, I know that's got to be a liability issue, but from a safety perspective, I'm very concerned about the kids, you know, this is supposed to be for our children. This place is supposed to be for our communities. And I've asked the board to consider putting fencing up to block it off at least in some way to mitigate some of the problems, but nothing's been done at this point. Something's got to happen because those buildings are a, they are a potential nightmare for someone getting hurt out there.
We dodged a bullet just recently with a break-in out there and turning on some electrical panels that had some bare wires exposed, so it is a huge risk.
Mr. Scott Finns.
You done?
Does she have any questions?
No, no, I just asked you through because I want the attorney to speak and then I want to say something.
You were on here, Mr. Pervert, you got something that you wanted to add?
Gentlemen, I guess you got a memo from me, basically with regard to occupancy of the buildings that are there. And quite frankly, I was surprised that I got another request to look at it because after the workshop we held in January of last year, I recommended that those buildings not be occupied and for a myriad of reasons, I see Mr. Carver in the back, back here, for a myriad of reasons that the school board, you know, abandoned those buildings and turned them over to us for, you know, years ago. And my opinion hasn't changed because of years, period of time has passed. My opinion is, do not occupy those buildings under any circumstances. I mean, you've got my memo and I went into other details about the problems that, you know, were there, but that's what I was asked to address and my recommendation hasn't changed, don't occupy.
Any questions for Mr. Pervert?
Mr. Pervert, the, please apoloitically, and the use of the buildings, are they no longer using those front buildings?
No, sir. I mean, after, we bent with them in May or June last year, we ended up entering an agreement with them that they stay out of those buildings.
And they're going into-
And they're in the gym, they have an occupancy, you know, of the office there in the gym. And then we came up with an agreement where they would get a priority status, working with Greg on scheduling, you know, the fields, but that's what has been done. So, there is no occupation that way of the buildings.
We currently do not have a, any type of a formal stance from this board about the future use of those buildings, other than your recommendation. Is that correct?
I'm not aware that y'all have made a decision on the utilization of those buildings. I just told you to stay out of them.
The last request that we had that I was part of was, I had a meeting with school, well, not the school board, but some staff from the school over a summer program. And after hearing the presentation from Mr. Carver and from our maintenance, Mr. Mark, that we opted not to let them have access. And I think they wound up holding a summer program in a church within the neighborhood, if I remember correctly. And that was the last conversation I had.
I just wanted to comment, Mr. Chairman, that Antoine still has some of his equipment and stuff stored in two of those classrooms over there, but he knows that he's got to be out of there as well.
But he's not holding classes or anything in there anymore?
Not to my knowledge.
Correct.
Because I had that conversation with him.
I had a question, I should have asked Mr. Scott when he was up here. When you apply for these grants, which you're very successful at, could maybe an enclosed building for holding indoor activities be part of that? Environment control, nothing? No?
Grants we get for outdoor space, we use 49% for parking. We have some that use for non-active recreational pieces.
Wouldn't qualify for any of that.
Got you, okay. Some of those larger grants we've been getting have been like the disability. It's got a different name and I can't remember, unique abilities grants. But they're good grants and they provide good spaces for, that's where the astroturf that he was talking about earlier.
Got you.
Come from.
Okay.
Which creates good, safe, nice environment for, from the play. Mr. Ford?
Mr. Chairman, last year when we ran the PAL Title I Summer Program, six-week program, joint partnership with PAL and the school board, it came up that we had not asked, PAL had not asked permission, I do serve on the PAL board also. So, we came before the board and the board indicated they wanted to go into a lease agreement with PAL for, I think, three or four of those classrooms on that first wing. And you're supposed to come back in 30 or 60 days at the next meeting, and I think Mr. Pervert was supposed to come back with this lease agreement. That never happened. Anticipating holding the summer program at the Douglas Center, using a couple of those classrooms, we secured some inmate support from Sheriff St. John and cleaned up several of those classrooms. We had the fire department to come out and give a safety assessment of the classrooms and came up, you know, with a couple of things. We had to put some fire extinguishers, some markers and things like this, but he assessed a suitable for this summer program. They have about 60 to 90 kids that's part of this program. You know, now I sense something going on behind the scenes about, you know, I'm not sure what memo that Mr. Pervert has presented to the board, he referenced a meeting last June with the school board and Mr. Carver and-
You were present.
And I was present at that meeting, right. A lot of things came up about the meeting, the, you know, condition of the classrooms on one side and the porous construction of the blocks and all of these things and what it would cost to bring them up, you know. We're not asking for all these things, we're just asking to occupy three of those classrooms, which has been cleaned up and suitable for occupancy. And this assessment that it not suitable for occupancy, you know, I'm kind of taken aback with all of that, you know.
Well, what changed, what changed our mind in that meeting, and you were there, was the moisture issue.
Right.
With the epoxy on the walls and at the presentation that Mr. Carver gave us about of how they tried to stop the moisture from the floor, the air conditioning, then the moisture was coming through the walls, so then they painted the walls, then it would still come in through the outside. And the risk that it posed to us at that meeting was that any building that you get in that you know, if it has moisture, it gets mold. If it gets mold, it has potential for black mold. It has potential for black mold, it has potential for illness, it has potential for illness, it has potential for lawsuit. And that was where we decided that we weren't going to be there anymore. And the moisture issue is a documented issue that has gone back since probably the 80s when they decided to build the middle school and move out of there and start on. So, it's rocked on for a while, but the liability side of it is what concerned us with that and that's why we didn't allow that program to go through. And you were there for all of that and you remember that.
Right, and I addressed, and those issues that was addressed was mainly the west side of the campus, you know, where they've had some flooding, not on the east side with the classroom that we occupy for the PAL program. And we addressed, those on the east side with the program take place is never, I haven't been all this time, but the people who have been here running these programs for the last 20 years has never had an issue with flooding on those classrooms that we are requesting to hold in the summer program.
Well, it wasn't necessarily flooding that was the issue, it was the air conditioning of the buildings that weren't designed for AC and it was the condensation that was building up. And I mean, mold is a serious business, I mean, the school board right now is building a million dollar building because of mold and because of a problem that can't be rectified in their previous location. I mean, it's a big deal on the liability factor for the kids and for the staff that's there, and that was the reason we made that decision. Yes, sir, Mr. Stapleton?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I make a brief comment?
Let Mr. Stapleton make his and then-
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Go ahead, he's fine. Go ahead.
I just, for the record, I just want to point out, and I have no doubt that Mr. Ford is not aware of this, but the front row of buildings, the east side that you're speaking of is where Antoine has two rooms and it did flood last year. Two rooms were flooded and Mark had to send staff out there trying to do what they could to try to-
I believe Anton was mopping water and bucketing.
He had to stay there 24/7, he was there several nights and days because it got raining and the water comes right up through the floors.
I was going to say, when he was in there getting it out that time, it was coming through the floor up.
There are no vapor barriers under those concrete slabs out there on any of the buildings and the water was coming right up through a cold joint under the block wall and nothing could be done to prevent it. I just wanted to point that out for clarification.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Stapleton?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ford, I, I want to say that I realize this property has great significance to you and to many of you in the audience, and it also does to me. I went two years of school there. And I've spent quite a few hours over there the last few weeks, walking that property, looking at it. I've, my adult life, I've been in the construction business. And to answer your question with that one wing and why we can't have classes in there, number one, when I look at the place and I see all the hazards that's on the other buildings, whether it's broke windows, whether it's wiring hanging down, whether it's busted metal on the floor, it's unsafe. It's unsafe for kids to travel there and go there because when they leave that classroom and they want to walk with their friends and they cut through the building to go out the other way and head back to the neighborhoods, it's putting them in harm's way. And trust me when I tell you this, we're having some tough conversations right now, we are. And I want you to understand that I have great respect for you and for all of you here and I'm willing to listen to anything, but at the end of time, we've got to do what's in the safety of the citizens and the kids that are going to be there. The other thing I would say is, with a background in construction, there's one thing I've learned in 30 years, water does not run uphill. If we go in there and we tore a couple of buildings down and we tried to get ballfields or playgrounds elevated to where they would drain, we would be sending all that water into the buildings that you want to keep. That's a major issue with doing that, on top of that they don't have any vapor barriers under the ones there. And trust me, it's tough because we all have to sit here and make very hard decisions about what we need to do. I respect your vision for that property, I respect that it has history. The buildings, I have an issue and a very serious concern when it comes to the general public. If there was any way we could get to a spot to where those buildings wasn't there and we wanted to be, you wanted to have some type of vision for some type of building there that replicated what is there now, I'm talking about on a smaller scale, that housed a museum and housed a thing for events and for, that was new and inviting, but that tied in the history that was there and something that was elevated where you had positive drainage. Trust me, I'm willing to listen and do anything we can to try to, try to come to an agreement that everybody's happy, but I don't want anybody to sit here and think that we're just, all we want to do is see these buildings gone and we're happy with what's happening, that's not it. We've got to make some tough decisions and we got to look at what we got there. We don't have any money to fix those buildings, they've been there for years and years like that and getting worse by the year. So, I struggle with this, I do. And I feel like I say that for all of us. We all, we all struggle with having to have these tougher conversations, but we do have to have them and I just wanted to say that to you.
Right, thank you very much for that input, you know, and I respect that. And I understand that, I understand where we are, but you know, I just feel that we need a real dialogue on this that involve all the stakeholders and, you know, for we could all be on the same level when we make, you know, a decision, discussion about this. On the agenda for this evening, you know, we was talking about these two items that I initiated about the memorial park and the National Registry, and all of a sudden, you know, we kind of blindsided- you know, we kind of blindsided with all of these other issues that's, that's going on without any, you know, have to, but it would be kind of courtesy to kind of, you know, let us know what's going on.
Well, that's not blindsided, it's on the agenda to discuss these park and rec opportunities.
Opportunities, you know, but, you know, this was, you know, when I see this, I don't, I don't get your packet and all of this, you know? I limited that to those two items that I had requested, you know? And, and so I could kind of see what's going on when I make these requests about National Registry, you know? Everybody become defensive about, you know, it's gonna keep these buildings from being torn down, you know? No, that's not my intentions on that. I think we need a discussion on what we actually can keep out there and what needs to go, and it needs to be a forum that, that include all the stakeholders. And we've had these kind of quasi-Douglas Boards, you know, with already decisions already been made about it when we go into them, but we really need a real discussion that include the stakeholders that will give input on these things. And then the community and myself would be much more likely to buy into it and support what we doing. You know, that's, that's a real historical site over there, and, and it's been worn out with that Douglas marker over there. Things that goes back until Reconstruction period, that history and the people who contributed to that. And we shouldn't take that lightly, you know? And, and the people who donated that property and, and funds to build that school over there in a time where, you know, a lot of folks was not included in society, and they, and they, they put blood, sweat, and tears in making this thing and allowing opportunities for people of color to get education. And, and all of this needs to go beyond the little superficial things that, you know, we had a meeting last June and, and somebody said the walls of this and the vapor barrier. I've heard all that stuff, but we could work around these things. And we run that summer program over there, I don't think any of you all have come over there to see these kids. These are the kids from that community, you know, who are the least likely to have these opportunities. You mentioned about, they talk about holding in a church, that did not come through, but, you know, so they will have to go to another program across town. Those kids not gonna go to that. You know, these are the underprivileged, the left out, the kids who are left out, and the kids who are just need these programs more than anyone else. And it, and it reflect, if these kids go to these programs over there, they go to these educational programs, they're most likely to show improvement when they go back to the school over there. So, so, you know, you need to look at allowing these kids to continue over there.
With all, all due respect, I, I think I just said that. If we envision building a new building there, if we could come up with something that would work, that would be new and inviting to the, to the citizens and the children over there. I mean, I, I understand that you got some resentment about things that's happened in the past, but I'm new to the Board, and with all due respect, I wasn't there at those meetings. I'm, I'm just trying to speak candidly with you and respectfully, and, and trust me, I, I have great respect. I've, I've said that already, and, and, you know, I feel like y'all are here tonight to have discussions, so that I don't see a problem with, with us having it. I want to try to, to make amends here and, and come up with some good decisions and a good vision. Trust me, I, Mr. Scott come up with great ideas and visions for that, but for all those things to work and the way the elevations is on those existing buildings is, we're gonna create the same problem with whatever we add to it if we don't have a fresh slate, so to speak, to start with.
Mr. Chairman?
You know, we, we have that summer program coming up here this summer. I would appreciate if you would allow Chief Summers to come over there and take a look at those three classrooms and see if they're suitable to run this program, to allow these kids to have the programs over there. They, they go over there from about eight to eleven, have three hours of reading, writing, and arithmetic, and a couple of hours of athletic stuff in the gym for six weeks, and it's invaluable for the kids in that community. And it's no alternative for running that program, no place else in the immediate area.
I understand that, but we have a dilemma with, when it comes to that. We have a recommendation from our attorney not to allow anybody to use it because there is huge liability there. If we go against the recommendation of our attorney and somebody sues us, we're personally liable for that lawsuit, and I'm not willing to take that on personally.
I agree.
We could, I would think, be able to accommodate maybe the Coliseum or something like that. Could we not discuss that effect at that time? But, but not, and not to jump on you, but, Mr. Chairman, if you want...
But, I, well, I understand, but I don't see why the Coliseum wouldn't be a reasonable or suitable site, other than it's not within the neighborhood that's in close proximity like, like the church was or like the Douglas Center was. But I agree with you, the kids aren't being served. But I can, in the condition of the buildings and waiting on these grants to restore these buildings, this generation's not gonna get served. This generation of children that's there now is gonna miss out. We're gonna push them to the side, not, and I don't mean us as a Board, I mean us as a community, because it's not gonna get anywhere. The money, we've been arguing about this for eight or ten years. That's almost a generation now that's been missed. It can happen through Parks and Rec, and it can happen rapidly. You've seen it from serving on that Board. It may not be the exact vision that you have for it, but how many generations do we miss before we, we do something that's gonna benefit, that's gonna take a kid off the street, that's gonna get him straightened up and do right? It's been proven over and over again that sports will, will lead kid down a right, a clearer path than, than not having something to do, you know? Idle hands is a devil's playground. I don't think we're disagreeing on the children, I just think we're disagreeing on a path to get there. And, but to your other thing that you stated that you were blindsided by, the memo from Mr. Scott, the map that we have of the baseball fields, the item is listed on the agenda, it's in the backup information, all of this is public information, and anyone that wanted it could have got their hands on it. And I've, you come to every meeting, so I know you know how to get them. So, it's there, it was there. Nobody was blindsided. If you didn't know about it, I hate to say it, but the buck stops with you on that one because it was in there, and it's, it's in here, it was in the backups that are available through the public, so I just, it was not a blindside, and I'm sorry if you feel that way, because you know me personally, me and you have talked many a times, and I'm not trying to blindside nobody. That's not how it work when it comes to this.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, I get an email, I got an email last Friday. Mr. Harris called me last Thursday, I believe, and said, "Mr. Ford, those two items that you requested would be on the agenda."
Correct.
And I got an email last Friday with the, all I got is agenda, and it, Agenda Number Twenty-three, whatever it is.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, showing that, you know, Mr. Ford and the, and, and the historical, the marker, Legacy Park, and the National Registry, that's what it says. So, I came here, you know, you know, so I thought Mr. Prevett's name was on there, Mr. Scott would be giving information on our discussion on putting the Legacy Park over there, and Mr. Prevett was going to be given the information about what he did on the, on the National Registry, you know, or what I kind of suspected about, you know, if we put it on the National Registry, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, and the stuff would be untouchable.
I understand.
But, but, but all these other items about the buildings and all of that was not privy, you know, to people who are here tonight.
Well, if, the, the, by the way, the agenda and the backup...
We don't, we don't get any backup.
It's on our website. It's always on our website.
You know, had I, had I had an inkling that it was gonna be more than this, I would've went to the website.
That's the part...
Mr. Harris called me, and I, and I saw it on the agenda.
But it's on the agenda. County Attorney Jimmy Prevett and Greg Scott, Parks and Recs, discuss opportunities, Parks and Rec opportunities. So, that's that on that. I mean, if you missed it, I apologize, it was there. Mr. Fleming, you said you had something?
I, I've, I've sat here and listened, observed what every individual had to say concerning the Douglas Center. This is probably nine years this been going on, and I fought this thing tooth and nails because I didn't have the correct information. I first came to this Board in 2010. And I, I, I've observed that Douglas Center out there, that project, and it's in bad, bad, bad condition, which we all know, we all know that. We also at risk liabilities. Electrical panels, there's some stuff that I know, that I'm aware of, and the sheriff, I wouldn't want DM and Chief Summers to go out there and pick up individuals. I, I shared with a, with a young lady, and I carried her, I met her out there, and she's sitting in here tonight, and the condition that's out there and what's going on out there, it ain't pretty at all. Doesn't look good, and it ain't good. Matter of fact, I was out, was out there a couple of days this week, today, talking with some people over in the community, and we were looking at the condition. I don't feel, I don't want you to feel, or anybody in this building to feel like that they've been blindsided or been shorted, because ultimately it's up to this Board to make the decision. This Board is gonna make the decision. At the end of the day, it's all about the kids, it's all about the children. The children don't have anywhere to go. I saw, and some things that I'm not going to say because it's ugly, I saw some, some young men and some girls coming out from that old building, those buildings, and I think it's disturbing at what I saw. I don't desire, I have no desire to see CNN, any news outlet in the community. The council said that it's unsafe, he has his opinion, I wasn't in the June meeting, but I do know the condition of that building out there. We all know. I'm out there every day, every, every other day except the times that I'm not, I, when I'm out of town. I don't want you to feel shorted. I don't want you to feel that it's, that it's a, a backdoor thing. I did have in mind tonight, I do have in mind tonight, but just by the grace of God, tonight, this night, that I won't make a motion. But at the next meeting, and, and what, what we need to do, we need to have a community meeting. My desire, let's, let's have a community meeting within these two weeks. Any question that you ask, I think I can come up with a good answer, or I'll have someone to come up with an answer. I want to be honest about it, and I want to be fair, because at the end of the day, it ain't about me, one individual, it's about doing what's right, and let's do the right thing. Those buildings are not safe, they are not fit, we can put plywood up there, they'll cut the plywood up, they'll rot, you gotta put more up there. We was out there, they took some type of crowbar, Mark and his guys went out there and put deadbolts on and screwed into those buildings. Someone took some type of bar or some type of tool and just busted that stuff off. You can't prevent them from going in there. It's unsafe, and we are at, at, we are, we are liable for what's happening out there. We are, this Board, the County Commission, we are liable for what's happening. I can leave here right now and drive through there, and I can, I can count ten people out there. I do it at nights, go into work, I go to work at night. I just drive through the parking lot, drive through, come out, take my lights, shine up in there flashlight, and hit the other exit. It's not a safe haven. I don't, have no desire to see anyone get hurt, don't want anybody to feel slighted as a backdoor, but I can promise, let's have a, a meeting within these two weeks, and we gonna have a decision.
Okay, I hear you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, I hear you say you're gonna call a meeting and, and perhaps in the gym or something like this?
Do it in the gym, we have a, have a community meeting. Pose some questions to me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleming, if you would too, when you do that, I had a very brief conversation with someone from the city today, and I was gonna mention this during this conversation, as far as their input and their willingness to be partners in this, I would reach out to them as well.
Counselor? Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Am I good to, to do this?
To have a, a meeting? Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you calling for, are you wanting a word shop?
Not, not the Board, not the Board.
Okay.
Not the Board, and I'm gonna meet with the commu, that community over there, and pose questions to me, and I can come up with an answer.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, Mr. Fleming, you say you were this close to offering a motion to do what? I, I don't understand, I'm...
Well, to offer a motion, I'm just gonna leave it like that, but let's, let's meet, let's have a meeting on Sunday, Sunday afternoon at the church.
That'd be good. It's not, it's not, won't, you know, won't, I won't stop you from having a meeting, I'm gonna be out of town, I'm gonna be in Washington during that time, but if you could...
I want, what I would like, so I would like to, I would like to get some, something from the community, that the community gonna know what's gonna happen. Then no one is, no one will be slighted, no one will say that you got backside, blindsided, everybody's gonna know what's going on.
I think that's a very good move, and I commend that, and if you could come up with a couple of dates and, and, um, alternative date from, from Sunday, uh...
You give me a, you give me a date.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think she had something.
Did you, go ahead while he was looking for a date.
Good evening, I'm Anita Williams. I went to Douglas High. I was actually, went crying, kicking, and screaming as the first group of blacks to integrate and leave Douglas. I'm just speaking for myself. I've lived probably the last forty years in another community where I'm very active, and this sounds like the situation I just finished with the city council, the mayor, and the metro where I live on a subway going through a predominantly black neighborhood. And I think for a while we fought what was not gonna happen, and I think that issue I'm hearing here. And I think if you're saying nine years, this has gone back and forth, somebody needs to have the guts to say that the Douglas School is not gonna be renovated, because you can't keep going back and forth on this piecemeal conversation. We fought hard for what we thought we wanted, and then when we saw that we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna get the subway to come above ground for those eight blocks, then you switch your energies to getting the other thing you want. So, my question would be, because I think when, when Mr. Fleming said he was this close to make a motion, I, I went over, I'm the person that walked with him, I wanted to, to look at the, the school and see the stuff, and I, I see the front part that people would want to save, and I, and I came here thinking, you know, why can't they save that? I'm not a construction person, I would hope that everybody on the diocese is speaking the truth. I have a friend who's a contractor where I live... I have a friend who's a contractor where I live, and when they, you start talking about water permeating from the floor up and the safety of the kids in the neighborhood. So my question would be, because in my head, I'm thinking,
Better?
The saving is not gonna happen. What, when you make that motion and you vote that you're not gonna save the school, what are we gonna get? When you have the community meeting, is there gonna be something that's appropriate and what the community deserves to remember the Douglas High School? Or is there gonna be, with the parks, are you gonna have a building that people can use? Seniors for senior activities, kids for kids activities, plaques, murials with maybe the principals, all the black principals? I, I mean, what? We have to move to, if you're going to raise the buildings, we have to be talking about what are we gonna get if that's what you're gonna vote on? And in my heart, I've been through this before, last year, and two or three years ago, and I must say, as hard as I fought for that subway to come above ground, I am now glad that it runs down Crenshaw Boulevard. But I'm only glad because when we didn't get what we wanted first, the second option was great. So if you are thinking about voting to get rid of the structures that are not there, and I can't speak for everybody, but what I do think is, is, is not so much the building, is if you remove the building, what you're gonna do with them. Now, the issue I had when I walked through the gym was, it looks piecemeal. The back is great. The front, I hate, and I told Mr. Fleming, that prison-type fencing that closes off the front. If you're not gonna move immediately to give the kids something to do to the west of the gym, what is it that you can do to renovate the complete gym to make that a place where people can use it for Douglas High Old Reunion, prom, basketball, offices in there? That should be the discussion. If it's almost a given that we're not gonna be able to keep the school in its present state, then the conversation should be with Parks and Rec and other funds that you can get, what can the community in the meeting that they're having be ready to hear that you've thought about? Because you can't just say we're gonna raise the school, but you don't have thoughts on what's gonna make it better. You can have some. When we went to fight against the subway, we came with ideas and things that we wanted when they brought the train above ground. So the community should have some input. Your contract people, people who are used to doing buildings that recognize history and culture. Maybe some African-American people from somewhere else that deal with this kind of issue. But I think I'm begging you, I mean, if, if you're saying it's been nine years, I would like to see somebody enjoy something in the next few years, even if it's money that you spent to make the gym a diamond until you do what's to the west of the gym, but please do something. Somebody have the guts to say what you are or you are not going to do so we can get something done for the children that are there before they are senior citizens. Thank you.
That was very well spoken. Thank you.
Yes.
And, you know, that gym, this is, this is a diagram of what's in the packet. It shows what's possible as far as the Park and Rec Avenue. Uh, ball fields, basketball courts, soccer fields. That gym restoration last year where we added that pavilion and those bathrooms on, I mean, best I remember was what, two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty?
Come out the total.
Yeah.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five. That's over a quarter of a million dollars for bathrooms and a pavilion. The board has shown a commitment to work there. But if we don't come up with a plan, like you say, it's been nine years. All we're doing is piecemealing little pieces here and here and here. And this is, we, we, we got to have a plan. She was spot on what we said. You've got, you know, if you were nine years old.
Nine years, we could have funded something by now.
If, if you were nine years old when we started this, you, you're graduating high school this year, and you, you've benefited nothing from it. And it's gonna keep rocking on that way if, if, if we don't move forward with it. And I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the Parks and Rec idea. Preserve the history. I've said it before. The Douglas Center means different things to different generations. What it means to your generation, my generation, and my kids' generation is completely different. You're preserving the history and the legacy, and the, I don't believe that the history and the legacy lies in brick and mortar. It lies with the story. And that story can be preserved and told, and the best way to do it, I think, is through Parks and Rec. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Andrea here in Sheffield. I'm very concerned about, like Miss Williams said about the Douglas.
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt you. Take a quick break so she can try to fix this mic, because I can't, we can't hear you.
Well, I can talk. My name is Andrea here in Sheffield. I'm concerned also about the Douglas Center. It seems like since twenty, how long you been like Robert? Twenty, when did we have the Douglas alumni?
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen. We've been excited about having our Douglas alumni at the Douglas Gym and having the cafeteria fixed. But I understand if you all can't visualize in your mind, when you have your mind set on negativity one way, the front, when I was over four H, we used that room. The front area where the first grade, second grade used was when I was at the Douglas High School. We used that. We used the air conditioning and everything. That was in twenty eleven when I started four H. That's when we had our media's portrait. We had no problems in there when I turned the air conditioner on. And like I say, it's twenty nineteen. If you don't use it or keep it up, or have any housekeeping there, of course, you're gonna have problems. But if a building is being used, cleaning, janitors and stuff, how often do we open that building? How often? Those buildings I'm talking about, you're talking about Miss Gracie, Wing, all the way down. I was in this, well, you don't remember teachers, when I was in this white class. And we had no problems, no problems with the power, all our four H stuff in there. But like I say, that was in twenty eleven when I stopped. Also, my next thing is, we build these fancy bathrooms. How often do we use those?
When there's an event, when they wanna use them?
When?
When the event.
They're open every day?
No, I, I, they can be open.
My thing is, you spent all that money on those buildings. You would have thought that you go off to lease, fix a couple of those rooms. How often do you use the bathrooms?
When there's an event.
Again, that's the model they came and they made it. That's, it's three hundred and, how many, three hundred and sixty-five days a year?
Well, there's more than that that you're probably aware of. Uh, I know that.
Oh, what I'm saying, we're just, just jumping up doing things and not considering to do the things that we have on the proposal. The bathrooms, what are we gonna do with this bathroom? How often do we use that? This is what I'm trying, this is my whole thing. When I think about a hundred and sixty, I don't know, you all probably know, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars on bathrooms.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five.
Oh, my gosh. And only thing we was trying to get you to do is one wing upgrade it. Nobody.
Ma'am, do you?
Mr. Sheffield, can I say something?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, let, let me say something.
Let me get her down.
The problem is, the attorney have, see, there's some stuff that, that's hanging out there, like, if someone gets sick right now and go to the hospital, and I, and maybe I shouldn't say this, and, and then the county got a lawsuit on their hand. Those buildings are not safe, and they, they, they've been unsafe for years. No one, Mark, Mr. Carver just left. I, I wish, and he's over, that's why, you see the school board, they vacated a perfect, that I thought, building, that, that old altar building. They got, they had to get out of that building. They had to, had to get out of that building. Those buildings out there, they are contaminated.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm saying. Those buildings are.
But my, yeah, my point was, you bought those bathrooms, you paid for those bathrooms, but you never did try to do what we were hoping to gain. I've known people that had, what'd you say, Mr. Madam? Mole, you call, call mole professional people in, and they come and seal, I wish I had it. They seal the mole and it's gray, and you open, you still use the building. Did you all try that?
That only happens until the next, uh, we.
All right, ma'am. We did not try it, and we, because we chose as a board not to try it. The board chose not to put millions of dollars into those buildings. We had an engineer give us a, an estimate on what it was gonna cost to repair them. It was over two million dollars. You can laugh, but you, you know, I mean, if building a bathroom costs a quarter of a million, you don't think renovating a building that's basically condemned? If we ever shut the water off or turn the power off, the city won't allow us to turn it back on. Because they'll go in and, and gig it on so many times because it's not safe. That's what we're getting at, is, it's, it's not an inhabitable building.
I understand that, and, and you don't have any argument from me about unsafe conditions out there. And it should have been remediated, and some of them buildings should have been torn down, uh, years ago.
Yeah.
You know, uh, but you know, all it.
Two thousand and seven, when the county got it, they should have implemented a plan immediately and started on it.
Right, you know, you know, you know, I'm going back. I don't wanna be, uh, uh, argumentative or repetitive, but you know, we need to have some, uh, 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 stakeholder involvement. You showed me a diagram that I guess, I, I guess y'all looking at some. I've never seen that before.
It's on our website. You're welcome to have it.
Right, you know, but, but that's tonight, you know? And, uh, you know, uh, you know, we should have had some input in on doing this diagram. You know, so, so this is what, how the people look at it, and that's the way I look at it. And, you know, uh, you know, you, you know, you have, you know, skillfully crafted, you know, a meeting and, uh, a, a report from Mark Carver and this, and it's now.
Mr. Ford, I disagree with you, man. I think you're being disrespectful when you say that.
Nothing skillfully crafted. That's a misrepresentation of what's going on here.
I apologize for that, but, uh, you know, but you know, you know, involve us in, you know, as, as stakeholders in this plan, you know? You know, I, you know, I, I see you looking, you know, you, you held it up to me, and I'd like to get, get a copy of it, but this is that.
Public record. You can have this one.
But this is the, the end of the process instead of the, at the beginning of the process.
Uh, I disagree. I mean, you've seen this before. It's.
Well, I'm, I may have, but you know, I'm, I'm not looking at what you're looking at.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm gonna ask that we, uh, that we cut this short.
I don't worry.
And I'm gonna ask by doing this. I agree with Commissioner Fleming that we should have a meeting, that he should have a meeting with the community, and I'm gonna ask that we bring this back on the next, uh, bit, on the next commissioner meeting, on the agenda, after he's had a chance to be able to talk with the community and give the report so that we can make a final decision on those buildings.
That's fine, if, but I'm ready, I'm ready to make a decision.
And I don't need, I don't need to hold it up in a lot. I could get with Mr. Fleming, Mr. Fleming after the meeting to set up a date for this, uh, meeting. But the date of this, uh, drawing right here is, uh, two thirteen, two thousand and nineteen, so it's, it's nothing that's been around for, for years.
It may not be the exact drawing. They may have updated, but it's been around. Baseball fields have been overlaid on that side more than once.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
I'm, uh.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've sat up here, and I've tried to be quite respectful to everyone, and I've told you that I care about that property, and I do. And I wanna see great things on that property. But I've also sat up here and been chastised and say we ride the fence, we're not making decisions. So right now, I'm gonna make a motion to remove those buildings and come back with something on that property that's beautiful for this community and for those kids. My motion is to remove the buildings. Move forward with Mr. Scott's proposal with the input from the community to change it however they see fit. However, we can come to an agreement with the board. They can come to an agreement with the board. And also, if there's something that we can do with some type of building there, that the county can participate with the city, I'd like to see that happen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we move forward with that, let, let me talk. Let me meet with these people, gentlemen. And, uh, I want to, uh, then no one is blindsided.
I respect that, Mr. Fleming, but I do have a motion on the floor. Um, I got a motion on the floor, stated as Mr. Stapleton stated. Do I have a second? You know, Ms. Fleming, I respect that you wanna have the meeting, but I wanna move forward with this.
Well, I, I do too, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm gonna pass the gavel to the vice chairman, and I'm gonna make a second on the motion.
Well, let me say something concerning this. The, um, my proposal, or my plan, or my vision in doing so, is having a multi-purpose building out there. Along with the drawing that Mr. Scott is proposing.
And I think feedback on the final plan of the, on, on moving forward and community input is important. I think that the overall plan of what goes there, a community center, a, uh, baseball field, softball field, volleyball field, whatever it is, I believe that's where your community buying comes in. But you've heard that old saying, you gotta pooper, get off the pot. I mean, we've been on the pot for nine years.
Yeah, okay. In, in saying so, and, and I don't disagree, but in, in saying so, in what I wanted to implement was, due to the fact that we know what we got out there. We, and, and, and there's nothing good that's out there. And I support, you know, what, what, what we're saying here tonight. And I, and I, again, I didn't say that no one would be blindsided. And, and, uh, also, if, if that's in your motion, if you include to relocate the ELC building that's out there, relocate the ELC building that's out there, uh, if it's feasible, as it, as it is feasible, I guess you can get with the sheriff.
Well, um, I think we had discussed that, and, you know, with, with the timeframe that worked.
Yeah, I think once we could replace it.
Right. And I, uh, I don't mean to be the bad guy here, but we have a motion and a second.
That's usually my job, Lord.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, oh, that's him.
I'm, I'm gonna respectfully ask, I, I'm not trying in any way, shape, or form to kick this can at all. Because I agree a hundred percent that those buildings need to come down, but I do believe Mr. Fleming represents those constituents out there in that community, and I wish that we would just simply table this motion until next meeting and then bring it back up again with, with what they say. I don't believe that it's gonna change the decision, but I do believe that it gives them a chance to speak. And at least if nothing else, gives them a chance to be here and speak. And I think that's what our job is. And I also understand that we're tired. Uh, some emotions are involved. I don't like being accused of things anymore than Mr. Stapleton did. And I remember my first commission meeting where I had to deal with this, I said the exact same thing. I don't particularly appreciate being accused of something like that, but we have a responsibility to our citizens, and let's give them a chance to have a voice. The, the ones that, that are gonna be using that.
This is, this issue has rocked on, and this typically is what happens. The, the board gets to a point. The board gets to a point where they're ready to make a decision and we have historically pushed it on to a meeting or a workshop and it never gets steam again.
Just asking for one meeting.
I get it. I mean, right now is probably the closest in nine years that we've ever come at getting something. And I'm telling you, it's going to hurt people's feelings right now. It will. But when we go out there and we get ball fields, pavilions, and the community has something they can be proud of rather than looking at these old raggedy buildings, those feelings will be relieved. I believe, I mean, it's.
I don't disagree with you in any way, shape, or form. I believe the community is going to stand up and say, get rid of these things, they're an eyesore and they're, they look, they just tear, take away from the community and we could do so much more, but.
I would ask the board, let's move forward with the motion. We will enter into, to workshops and community buy-in on the final product, but everybody's on the same page as far as the board goes and a lot in the community.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Well, I'm going to say this, before, hold on. We have.
Mr. Commissioner Stapleton, want to talk, please?
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Fleming, I would just like to say, trust me, I realize we're all in a delicate situation here and the last thing I want to do is upset anyone. I want the best for out there, but I also ask you to think about this right now is the severe danger that's out there right now. And we can put it off for two weeks and then in two weeks we can put it off for two more. But what if we leave here tonight? We're this close to being able to do something positive out there. What if we leave here tonight and something happens tomorrow or something happens next week and we look back and we say, you know, we almost done the right thing, but almost is never good enough. I just ask you to think closely about how dangerous the place is. I mean, right now I'm not even comfortable. I wish you had a construction fence around it where you couldn't even get into it. And I just, I understand that, and I understand you, Commissioner Richardson, that you want to wait, but we've all been there and just please take that into account also.
It's not that I, it's not, Mr. Vice Chair, am I? It's not that I want to wait. I really, if the board's willing to vote it, then I'll vote my conscience and I'll be done with it and it'll be done. But I would, I would rather see the community get behind our effort to do what we're going to do and have the people stand up to the alumni and say, these buildings aren't worth keeping. Two point six million dollars, someone want to come up with two point six million dollars?
I mean, I'm not being disrespectful when I say this, but Mr. Fleming knows you're not going to get that buy-in from a small group. That is not the end goal for that group.
Well, the intention behind it is, I didn't like the fact or the idea that to be said, that it's a backdoor, backstab, and I know you have to move past that.
I know, but every bit of it's on the agenda, Mr. Fleming.
But the truth of the matter is, and I'm going to say this and I'm going to be through, but the truth of the matter is I'm just giving them the opportunity, giving them the opportunity. I already know what the answer is going to be. I already know what the decision is going to be. The decision is, is basically, basically is concrete. I mean, we can't fix those buildings. Buildings can't be, the money is not available. I think people in that community need to know the truth that, and I think probably seventy-five percent of them, they're not going to go along with it. But just a small group of individuals, I got a gentleman there that he's like a brother to me. He didn't leave and I most certainly appreciate that, Mr. McClenin, for sitting here and hearing us through. I'm not backing off of anything. It could have been done. I'm not a coward and I just like doing it the way it should be done. Now, if they doesn't, if no individual come out and say, I'm not meeting with you, your decision you already made, I gave you the opportunity. You can't say I did it because at our next meeting, if it ain't done tonight, it's.
Just me personally, Mr. Harris got up and said it the best. When you realize you're not getting what you want, look at what you can get and let's move forward with that. And I think, I mean, I know it's your district and I get that.
Mr. Campbell, the vice chair.
Yeah, Chairman, you be quiet for a minute.
It will.
Mr. Harris, want to like to speak, please?
Mr. Vice Chairman and Chairman and board members and everyone else that's listening, I want to make something very clear. No one has been blindsided, period.
No.
That was stulted.
Everyone knows that we make available every agenda item that's listed in that index that goes out publicly. And the chairman did point out that it is public and anyone that ever asks to be on the list, have everything emailed to them, we do it and we always have. On a rare occasion, something may not make it in there that we then make available later when we get here, but there hasn't been any blindsiding going on at all.
No.
I want to make just a brief comment about the condition of the buildings. I know that Mr. Stapleton went out there and walked that property and I'm confident that everyone on this board did the same thing. But like Mr. Stapleton, I'm in the building industry. I've been a contractor for a long time and I can tell you that you cannot fix the problem with the lack of vapor barriers underneath those concrete slabs. You can't lift the buildings up now and put vapor barriers under them. And the problem that the school board had in their evaluation and trying to correct this problem was they were trying to use epoxy, special epoxy paints to try to mitigate this problem and they could not do it. And it created other problems and that became very clear in that meeting that we had last year. So those building problems cannot be fixed, okay? We sent an engineer in there later to look at them, to do cosmetic things and this huge price tag that we got back was to fix superficial things, cosmetic things, not to fix the systemic problems with those buildings that can't be fixed. So those two things I just wanted to make very clear, but primarily, no one's been blindsided here. We make all this information available all the time, so to allege that is completely out of bounds.
It's on our website. Anybody that requests an email sent to them, we've got an email list I'm looking at right now, there's forty-eight people on it. I'm looking at the audience and I see several of y'all on this list. I mean, we make every effort to get it to people. If you're not on here, it's because you haven't requested to be on here, but it's still available on the website. Nobody was blindsided. It was on the agenda, it was in the backup. You know, I heard and a long time ago, you know, I can print it for you, but I can't make you read it. That.
Commissioner. We got Commissioner Richardson and Mr. Harris.
Mr. Vice Chair, I want to make this official, I'm going to repeat my request in the form of a motion to table this.
We got a motion. We got a motion and a second. We're having a discussion.
You can, you can request a table, to table this, and if I don't get a second on it, then it'll fail. But it is, and then I'm going to offer a second motion to amend it, to amend the motion if I don't get the second, if I don't get at least consensus to table this.
Mr. Harris, did you want to say something before we?
Yeah, what I wanted to say was that while I appreciate the idea that holding a community meeting is going to draw some people, what you're going to realize, see, I came here in a time machine, I've been through this stuff before. What you're going to realize is that you have two very distinct groups of stakeholders and the group that's been the most vocal is not going to change their opinion. The group that isn't here tonight is the parents and all those children that live in the community. I don't know for sure, but I would venture, I would simply speculate that the majority of those, that smaller group of stakeholders probably doesn't live in that immediate neighborhood and doesn't need a place for their children to play and find recreation and parks and all these things that we've been talking about. So just keep in mind, if you have a meeting, there are two entirely different groups of stakeholders and there's one.
And keep in mind, those five-year-olds, six-year-olds, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, they're stakeholders. They got just as much invested in this as anybody else.
They are stakeholders, but guys, we got to remember too, the real stakeholder is the people of our community.
It is, and those are, the kids, everyone, but I'm saying, what's there now is a danger to it.
Their safety is our responsibility.
We had a break-in where they busted in those doors and went in there and undone those electrical boxes and turned on the power.
Right.
And we had them turned off because they, has already been break-ins where they've stole the air conditioners and stole other things, stripped wires out of buildings to have it sent to the recycling place. Now you're turning on live wires. If a kid would have went in there and stepped on one, grabbed one, it would be a completely different story tonight. Chief Summers.
First, they talked about a fire inspection, I can assure you that wasn't by my service.
No.
So I was not requested, my service was not requested to provide any fire inspection or anything for those buildings. Number two, even the demolitions of these buildings, if that's the way the board decides to go, it's going to take time to set all that up, as Commissioner Stapleton stated. Construction fence with signage, no trespassing, endangered would help benefit the security of the board as far as liability possibly. So I mean, even, no matter what the board does, and it's a delicate decision, I assure you, but construction fence and signage would be safety to the community because there's kids always out those fields, they wander all over that property and it puts us a liability every day, so.
Mr. Vice Chair. Talking about an inspection, I can tell you right now, if we ever turn the water off, city won't turn it back on. They won't turn it back on for a screen missing, they ain't going to turn it back on.
Well, because what happens per the code is now you've changed it, you're going to make changes, so you've got to comply to the current code, so you're going to bring it to current standard, the entire building, once you do that. So that's how that process works.
They turn the water off.
All right.
Mr. Vice Chair. Do we have consent, do I have consent to a table?
No, not for me.
No?
Anyone else?
No.
All right, then I'll offer a motion to amend that I would support this motion on the condition that we shut everything off effective tomorrow on this building and fence it and get it ready for demolition. We don't have the money for demolition.
We can't shut the gymnasium on any.
Well, I don't mean that, I'm talking about the other buildings that are going to be demolition. Unless you can't shut the electricity off without it.
May I address Mr. Richardson's concerns on when we shut everything off? You cannot shut everything off because of the EOC. It's not the gymnasium. The gymnasium is independent from that facility. However, we can do some things and put in rerouting sewer, rerouting water, and then it can be terminated. The power can be shut off to that facility. We have to call in Florida Power, they can go to the transformer and they can pull it because we have to pull it ahead of the mechanical room because we've already found out that they're going in our mechanical room and we've got it sealed back up again, but we're talking about three-phase power and juveniles.
Yeah.
Okay? That's really what scared me. This happened last week and it looked to me like they took a sledgehammer down that hallway and busted out every deadbolt lock down that hallway. The broken glass, that's been bothering me for years and everybody's known about that. All these other issues have been bothering me, but we can't keep people out of there. They're using it as a party, as a rave, whatever you want to call it, that's what they're doing in there. And it's going to take, just like Mr. Stapleton said, one person, one person to get a little nick. That's all it's going to take because the infection that's going to sit in from that nick is going to be something that we don't want to even talk about.
Well, I'm prepared if, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared, Vice Chair, if you want to, y'all want to make the motion, I'm.
There's a bunch of motions, I just wondered, do we need?
There's a motion.
Do we need to do this?
I'm tired.
Mr. Counsel, do we need to just get both of them to redact their, and make a new motion?
Yeah, but that didn't go anywhere.
We have a motion and a second.
You have a motion.
And then we have a motion to amend.
That's right.
Without a second.
That hasn't been asked for.
Has not, has not gotten a second.
Okay.
Can I clarify the motion to amend?
Clarify your motion.
Yeah, clarify.
I'd like to clarify the motion to amend. We obviously don't have a budget to demolish this building.
Correct.
We also don't have a budget to move water and sewer, do we not?
Let me tell you something, if you give me the authorization to make that building come down, I'll find the budget.
The water in the sewer is not the main concern, the concern is the electricity and he said they could handle that.
Okay.
So if you.
The power, we can disconnect the power.
It's more than just that. I really believe that we need to at least mitigate some of the liability by putting the fence, a fence around it.
I agree with that.
Sharing the building. That's my amendment I offer, to shut off the electricity and begin the process of shutting the water and the sewer off to that, and those facilities.
Do we have a second? So here's amended.
authorize, authorize me to obtain bids on the fence if it exceeds our otherwise quote ability.
You include that in your.
That would be it.
I'll second his amendment.
All right.
So now we need to vote on the amendment and then we vote on the motion.
Correct.
So we have a motion and we have a second.
You can receive the amendment as a friendly amendment to the main motion.
Since you're one of the, since you're one of the ones that seconded it. Well, it is friendly, so I mean, I'm fine with doing it all as one.
Okay. All right, so we'll go back to the original motion by Mr. Stapleton and seconded by Mr. Campbell, to Mr. Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You know, one opposed. Motion carries. I vote.
You voted.
Aye, yep.
You're doing a fine job, you want to keep going.
I didn't see you before you leave. McClenin.
Mr. McClenin, he.
I want to see you before you leave. You don't sit here all this time.
You're getting past his bedtime.
He's retired, I got to go to work tonight, so we ain't going to take too much longer.
All right, that's on, moving on. Item twenty-seven, you got anything on the water plant, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Wait, no additional agenda items, correct?
No, sir.
No, that we needed any after that. Public concern and comment, you going to wait till the next one, anyone else?
Come on, Bo. Hey, if you're going to amend your mind. This is working, Mr. Ford. Okay, my name's Bo Hancock, sixty-one thirty-five Wigan Road. Can y'all get this dead gum audio system fixed? I'm tired of sitting out there, my damn hearing aids are as loud as I can get them and all I hear is the air conditioner blowing and I can't hear y'all. Ricky's doing this, talking to his hands, looking this way.
Well, I'm looking at the people I'm talking to, but anyway.
That doesn't help us out here, we can't hear you.
Well, I wish you'd said something during the meeting, I could have spoke up.
Well, you've got the little things in front of you, can't hear them, they're not working. The stalk work sometimes. I don't know why. When. You talk to the stalk. You don't talk to the stalk, they can't hear you. Talk to the stalk.
You didn't, you didn't mean, you didn't.
He voted, so he don't like it.
That was a rant.
It made the paper on the rant read.
Got in three minutes.
You need to get control of your room.
Okay, got two more minutes, Chairman.
Put it in the budget, workshops. You sure you don't want yours? Anyone else? Anyone else? Administrator comments, you've already said what you had to say, board members' requests, comments. Mr. Richardson?
We just, I just want to let you know that DOT was out in McAlpin Monday night with a meeting with the community about the one-inch bridge and we hope to hear from them in here in the next couple of months about what decision they're making with the design, what they made with the design. And I appreciate them going out there and talking to the people.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fleming?
After must, excuse me, my loss. After must discussion, I thank all commissioners. Okay, I'm sorry, but the commissioners tonight for, I said job well done. I appreciate the sincerity, the honesty, just another week, but it would not have mattered, but at least we have some clarity. I want to thank my good friend, he and my brother were classmates. He say I'm his big brother, he's older than I am, but he say I'm his big brother.
Little brother.
Little brother. But he's very supportive, good Christian man. And I thank you for staying tonight and hearing us through, knowing what's going on because I know there's going to be some talk, but you know, all that talk, do it just makes me strong. I have some. I have some very, very thick skin, as you well know. My skin is thick, hard, hard as a rock, I was raised like that. But I wanted to say, on the other side, Jimmy, Mr. Norris and I, economic director, we were down in Orlando last week, we had a nice time, since all this, I can't hardly think about what I was about to say. But it was dealing with economic development and about some of these same things, what we were discussing tonight. If you don't know, ask questions, and maybe you'll get some understanding. There was a lot of, a lot of misunderstanding tonight on some things, and we're getting there, we're getting there, but there was some things that were brought out, and maybe I can think about it, like Tim said, Mr. Acorn said, at the next meeting, I think at the next meeting, maybe I'll think about what we was talking about down in Orlando. But if you don't mind, what you missed, then I'll think about it next week.
We'll get it, we'll let him give us an update on the agenda next week, or next board meeting.
Okay.
Please do one anyway.
And forgive us, forgive me for, for not thinking, you know, but I got sidetracked.
You're good, you're good. Lot going on tonight.
More than that though.
Mr. Hale?
I'll just say, and I'll keep it short, I, I know it was a hard decision, it has been, obviously it's taken a lot of time to get to the point we are, but I do think this board, like Mr. Stapleton said, wants to keep the integrity of that place out there. And I think we made the right decision, I really do. And I would encourage you, Mr. Commissioner Fleming, to hold your meeting, even though we've made this decision, you still bring those, those people in and talk to them, and let's see what, what their goal is for the future of that. And I'd also like to say thank you to the county employees, I think we don't tell them enough, but there are things that, that, you know, we get phone calls on, and we don't go out and fix the problems, they do, and I just want to recognize them, and I appreciate them, so.
Mr. Stapleton?
Oh, where do I start?
At the end?
With, with three months in here and. No, in all seriousness, I, it's a very tough decision, and trust me, I know that I'm gonna leave here, I'm gonna get phone calls, I'm gonna get chastised, just like Commissioner Fleming, but at the end of the day, I gotta do what's right. I gotta do what's right for this community, I gotta do what's right for the, for the people that look to us to make the good decisions, and sometimes we make bad ones, but I done a lot of homework on this, and spent a lot of time, and I just want to say, Mr. Fleming, Commissioner, I'll be with you hand in hand, people need answers, I'll be right there with you, if there's something I can do. I'm not, I'm not hard to get ahold of, and I understand that there's gonna be some backlash. Seems like every week now that we have a meeting that I bring up Jamie's name, but one thing I, I will say on this is, I know you're fair and partial in the paper, but let's, anything you can do, I mean, let's. I mean, this was a tough meeting, we don't need to make it any worse.
But make it very positive.
Only other thing I'd like to add is, just congrats to Mr. Scott for many years of service, we appreciate you, and if you can get on that first thing in the morning on Douglas Center, and let's go ahead and get, get some help over there, we show those folks what we can do. Other than that, I'd just like to keep the Gaylord family, and also the Smith and Mixon family in our prayers, just been a hard month here for Swanee County, and I know there's some other folks that, I don't have their names right here with me, but just all the families in general, and that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. This has been in the works for a long time, Mr. Fleming, I mean, going one way or the other, and I know come tomorrow morning, the story will be different than what happened here. But we, we support you. I know you got a good plan for this, and we've had you back on it the whole time, and I don't think anything's changed, it's, it's the right thing to do, may not be the popular thing to do, and sometimes that's just how it is, the right thing's not the popular thing, but I think if we do it right, that it's something the community can be proud of.
Thank you.
If no one else has anything, just need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.